This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The schedule of the meetings is on file in the Bureau of Commerce office, was posted on the bulletin board, and has been mailed to the local source and the Star Ledger. Can everyone please stand to salute the flag?
I salute this unit of flag of the United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call?
Anthony DeLuca excused, Rick Pusserino excused, Robert Shelphy excused, Greg David
Here.
Robert Gromaldi
Here.
Rick Pantina
Here.
Frank Mazzio
Here.
Anthony Udawie excused, Joe Calella
Here.
Anthony Capari
Here.
Sean Kenny excused, and Ryan Jones
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum to proceed. First item on agenda is approval of the January 10th, 2019 minutes. Someone like to make a motion to approve the January 10th?
I'll make it.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Gromaldi, do you have a second?
Second, Mr. Jones.
Second by Mr. Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. So carried. Next item, communications. Do we have any communications, Ellen?
No.
No. Okay. No communications. Do we have any resolutions?
No.
No. And was there any approvals that were needed tonight?
Any?
Approvals for, I thought I saw maybe some resolutions on the back.
No.
Okay.
No, before we finished that.
Okay. Okay. So then our next item would be new business. And under new business, we have two cases this evening. For the sake of expediency, we are considering moving the McDonald's case, which is application number 374 up first, and the application 369, ADHP, the real estate LLC, to second. Board members, everyone okay with us? I believe Mr. Regal, we heard that the applicant for ADHP is kind of aware, or at least the attorney for ADHP was kind of aware that we were considering doing this this evening.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Kevin, is that correct, that they had a heads up, at least that that might happen?
Yes, you might want to just make sure Mr. Goodman is on the record that he's aware of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, then we will proceed with application number 374, 1-19 site plan variance for McDonald's USA LLC is the applicant. Here.
Our attorney, we tried to find out if he was a part of that.
Why are you hollering at each other? Well, I guess we'll give you a few seconds to find out if you reach him or not, but otherwise, I guess we'll have to proceed with ADHP. Has there been any response yet?
No.
I just got dinged.
It doesn't look like it.
You might have just shouted off.
He's here for a permit here.
Yeah, yeah. Tell him to come in.
You're up.
Step right up.
I trusted your agenda then.
Never do that.
Do you need a second, Counselor, or are you?
No.
Okay.
Just trying to figure out where you should go here.
Well, let me ask first, Ellen, is proof of notice and publication in place? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Hope everybody's well. Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Scott Lippard. I'm a member from Passrystine, Wobberhaven, and I'm here tonight representing the McDonald's corporation. We have, what I think you, I hope you'll agree, is a simple application, mostly because the vast majority of this property is located in Union. And we've already gotten a site plan approved from Union. And the only variance we need tonight in Kinnellworth is we need a parking variance. And interestingly enough, the parking that we have complied with the Union code, so we didn't need a parking variance in Union, but we need a parking variance in Kinnellworth. So just briefly, by the way, background, if you traveled around New Jersey and really all over the place, you'll notice that there's a lot of McDonald's that are undergoing renovations. There's new facades, there's, they're sort of rebranding. And that's what, that's what we're doing here. We're hoping that you'll agree that this is an application that improves existing conditions, that makes ingress and egress safer, that improves traffic flow, and that is an aesthetic improvement on what the current operation is there. So I have, I do have three witnesses tonight. I have our engineer, I have, we've done a traffic study because we need them to do it from Union, so why not give you the benefit of the doubt, so we'll have that. And we also have a planner who will give testimony on whether or not the variances are appropriate. So I'd like to start with my engineer, if that would be okay.
It's fine, proceed. Okay, sworn.
First, let me swear on our consultants first, Christian and Kevin, with regard to this application and the other application that we will hear tonight, do you swear that your testimony will be the truth?
I do.
All right, that's the record, that's the board planning consultant and the board engineering consultant. Okay. Do raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yeah, I do.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Martin Swaggard, that's spelled S-W-A-G-G-A-R-D.
A-R-D, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Swaggard, who do you work for?
I work for Core States Incorporated.
All right, and you're a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am. 1995 graduate of the University of Florida with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I have approximately 23 years of experience in civil engineering, mostly in commercial land development consulting. And as Mr. Lippard mentioned, I'm currently employed as a Senior Project Manager with Core States Incorporated.
We hope that you qualify as an expert.
Okay. Everyone's okay?
Yeah.
All right, so let's, we have a site plan that's available. All right, let's identify the site.
This should be A1, it doesn't look like anything.
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a colorized rendering of the site and the conditions?
Yes, it is.
All right, let's mark it A1, please, get A1. Colorize rendering your site plan.
So Mr. Swaggard, you were involved with the preparation of these plans and you're familiar with the plans, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so why don't you use A1 to facilitate an explanation of what the existing conditions are, starting, you know, starting with what's there now?
It's an existing McDonald's restaurant with a single lane drive-through, you know, completely developed site, a little bit of landscaping on the front of the site, another little bit of existing landscaping between the two existing driveways on Route 22. The proposed site is a remodel McDonald's.
But before we get to that, just explain how the traffic control works.
Okay, sure. It's, right now, there is a right-in, right-out driveway on the western side of the site on along Route 22, a right-only driveway on the eastern side of the site on Route 22, and then on Michigan Avenue, there's a full movement driveway. Most of the vehicles enter the site from job 22 and can circulate around the back to the drive-through, or kind of reach and come back around the front and exit onto Michigan Avenue, or they, the majority of the parking is actually on the Kinnellworth side of the site, on the east side over here, so they can also access that.
Is it easy to point out where the municipal boundary is?
Yes, and we can see it right here, this municipal boundary, cuts off a sliver of the east side of the building.
So there's a sliver of the building that's in Kinnellworth, and all the parking is in Kinnellworth?
No, there is some parking in.
There is some parking in Union?
Not in Union.
Sorry. And some of the, some of the driveways are part of Kinnellworth.
Yeah, the eastern driveway is in Kinnellworth and Michigan Avenue driveway.
Okay. And so let's, let's go to what, do you have the site plan that's been approved in Union that we can explain to this board what the planning board in Union approved?
So this, now... Do we, do we have this, or no?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the site plan right now.
This is the site plan that's been submitted, so we don't have to mark it?
We don't have to mark it.
Okay.
Sheet C4.
Sheet C4, yes. So you're using sheet C4, starting with the construction of the new drive, the new side-by-side drive-through, explain what's been approved, please.
Well, this site has a very, very high volume of drive-through customers, so as part of the McDonald's, what they call major remodel program, they are proposing what they call side-by-side drive-through here. I've seen them out of their restaurants. Basically adds another drive-through lane, another ordering point, and allows, it reduces the queue length of cars, and it also allows two people to order at the same time if necessary, because then there's another person that will be taking orders. So what, what it does in the end is it can reduce drive-through wait times between ordering and pickup between about 50 percent. So where there, it could be maybe three to four minutes now, that can go down to approximately two minutes just to get, to get to the drive-through and get out of the site.
So what's the breakdown now between customers who come in to drive-through and customers who actually enter the site to park and go into the restaurant and eat?
Approximately 70 percent of the customers are drive-through customers.
And that's why McDonald's undertook this, that's one of the reasons why McDonald's undertook this renovation, was to put in a second drive-through to facilitate those requirements.
Yes, but yes.
Okay. All right, let's, so let's talk about the internal layout and seating, and any changes that have occurred in that?
Well, nothing's occurred, yeah, but was it part of?
I'm sorry, that will occur, if, if this board approves the application.
If it approves, the second part of this proposal is a remodel of the building. It will no longer look like a traditional McDonald's, they removed the red manseur and blue portion of it. This particular site also has an exterior seating area that's being removed, and they're basically going to provide a more rectangular-shaped building, and a more clean, modern look to the building. On the inside, what is proposed is all new decor, new kitchen equipment, new counters, new menus on the inside for ordering, and as well as renovated bathrooms to meet ADA compliance requirements.
All right, and do we have a board that shows a, give a rendering of what the new facade can look like?
That needs to be marked.
Yeah.
A2?
So A2 would be, have we submitted this?
No.
Okay, so this is a colorized rendering of the proposed elevation.
Oh, no, not colorized, no.
Elevation. If you could maybe stress what, the portion that's in Kinnellworth, you know, the side.
So it would be, this is the front elevation, it'd be about approximately this portion right here. So this is Union, this is Kinnellworth here.
And this, this is more or less what the color scheme means, so I can, and this represents what's, represents what it's really going to look like.
This is what it's going to look like.
Okay. All right, and so now, we've also added some menu boards, is that correct?
Correct. Well, we also, part of the, one of the exterior proposals is to replace the existing, well, there's one existing menu board, there's only one order point right now, so about a 42 square foot menu board. It'll be replaced with two, they're proposing two order points, so there'll be two digital menu boards, they're each 20 square feet, as well as a, they call it pre-route board, which is just another smaller digital menu board, it's 10 foot, that customers can see before they get to the menu board that it might advertise a particular special or something like that that's on the menu. That's up to the owner operator, what they want to select.
Okay, and we've changed, let's go back to the site plan. So we've also changed the parking to make it ADA compliant, correct? Do you want to point that out to the board?
Yeah, currently the parking on site, another component of this program is to make sure not only the inside is ADA compliant, but the exterior path will travel to the building meets ADA guidelines. The site currently does not, so they are proposing to repave the accessible parking spaces in concrete, slope them, grade them, so that they meet the tolerances required for compliance slopes, as well as replace some sidewalks and some structure to make sure that disabled customers can get in, access the building for the requirements of the American citizens.
And how about lighting? Have we made any changes in the lighting?
Some small changes, we had to relocate a few lights slightly, but besides that, there are one significant changes, maybe moving some poles a couple of feet.
And how about drainage? What changes in drainage?
No, they're all runoff right now, currently just sheet, basically sheet flows off to Route 22 and a portion of it off the Michigan Avenue. There is no collection system on site, so we're not changing drainage patterns, but we are proposing significant landscaping increase, so that'll result in a decrease in the form of runoff.
And a decrease in the peruse cover.
And a decrease in the peruse.
Okay. And so therefore, there's no new stormwater system is implicated because it's actually decreasing in purpose.
Correct.
Can Ellen, so there's no plan to repave the parking lot that's in Kinnellworth?
They're repaving the whole parking lot.
Okay, because you said just the...
They're repaving, they're going to keep, they're maintaining existing drainage patterns. Over here, they're just, it's almost just like a mill and overlay, just as clean as ever.
Okay, but yeah, but it needs it, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, the whole site's getting a facelift.
Thank you.
Okay, and let's talk about landscaping, and I guess the county, and there is going to be one deviation from what was approved in Union, right?
Correct, yeah, they're proposing some significant landscaping increases. One, a big portion of it is on the Union side, where between the building and the side-by-side drive-through, there's going to be a nice landscaping area in here. Also, McDonald's would like to, obviously, play on the Kinnellworth side, and they are proposing landscaping similar to what exists in the center of the site, same thing, kind of mimicking that at the intersection of Michigan Avenue and Route 22, they want to put another landscaping strip along Route 22, as well as a new concrete sidewalk, and then on Michigan Avenue, they're proposing another landscaping strip and a concrete sidewalk.
Is that any different from what you want on that?
This is what was submitted, we also, we submitted the, for county requirements, we and county requirement, borough requirement, we need county approval. The county on Michigan Avenue wants us to basically switch, have the sidewalk, right now, the landscaping is in between the proposed sidewalk and, and the edge of Haven, the existing curve. The county wants us to switch that, have the sidewalk along the back of curve, and then the landscape strip between the parking and sidewalk.
Okay, let's now talk about loading, deliveries, delivery times, et cetera.
Deliveries occur twice a week, delivery trucks, they come during off-peak hour right now, they're coming overnight. It changes, I think, several times a year, but it's always during off-peak hours. Delivery trucks enter off of Route 22, pull up along the back of the site, and they, it takes them about 15 minutes to unload their, it's a palletized system, and then they exit straight out on Michigan Avenue, where they probably go through the back up to Route 22, just to get them next stop.
And how's trash collection work?
Similar manner, trash is picked up several times a week, they enter off of Michigan Avenue, they pull up to the trash enclosure, which is located in the southwest corner of the site, pull straight up into it, then they kind of have to back up a little bit, and then exit out the same way.
All right, and now, can you tell the board what the hours of operation are?
Drive-through is 24 hours, the lobby closes at 11 p.m.
And what, how many employees are there in?
Depending on the shift, they can have, they have 70 total employees, but 15 to 20 on a mass shift, depending on time.
And do you know if any of those employees walk to work or use public transportation to work?
50 percent of the employees take public transportation, but then decide on what colors to get to the site.
Okay. So I guess let's go with the engineering report, and go through the waivers and see, see what we have to say about that. Well, we can, she can show it. So the first one that I have is number seven, is saying, phasing the construction is proposed to pass show down to the heat section, or which final approval will be requested.
Yes, we're requesting a waiver of that, because that's not applicable to this project, and I don't do it all at half months.
What page are you on?
Yeah, what?
What report?
Kevin, he said number seven.
Christian, did you do a report on this, or no?
Yes.
We got it.
Do you have a chair, or?
Can I?
Oh, yeah, that's number seven, it's your letter from 2012.
Yeah, Part B.
Page six.
Oh, you're on the planning report? Yes, sorry, I'm on the planning report. I said engineering, I'm sorry. Yep. So number seven, the first, phasing is not applicable, right? But I have phasing.
And this is the February 8th report, planning report?
Yes, it's page six.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure, we have a number of reports here, okay.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Okay, and number eight, request of development plan, say, and we're saying that that should be granted away with that, because we're not really changing it.
The site's completely developed, well, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, we're not changing it, except for, kind of, that stuff. Surface water management plan, do you need one?
Yeah, like, as I mentioned, runoff is staying the same, as I said, we are actually adding a lot of landscaping and some decrease in peruse coverage, so there will be a reduction from runoff on the site.
All right, and now, number 10, it asks for delineation and classification of wetlands.
It says that the site's completely developed, it's in a completely developed commercial area, so we don't have one, that happens on site, and there's, okay.
Okay, and number 11 is the letter from Bureau of Engineering stating that the platform requires requirements. I understood that to apply to subdivision, so I'm not sure if it's correct, but that's, that's how I understood it.
Well, the statement that it doesn't apply to your, would be appropriate.
Yes, yes, okay, there's not a problem. Preliminary site plan checklist, Part B, storm drainage plan, showing location of impacts, et cetera, and so I take your testimony to be for the same reasons as we've already discussed, it's not necessary.
Correct, we really have no stormwater facilities on this site, like I said, it was originally designed, just sort of everything sheet flows off the site.
And the next one is significant physical features, including streams, water courses, et cetera.
Oh, we haven't, I mentioned, we have here as a simplistic example.
Okay, and we know that this application will be subject to outside approvals from Somerset County, sorry, Somerset Union Soil Conservation, NJDOT, and Union County Engineering.
We've gotten the STD approval, we are in progress with PennDOT, and with the county regulations, we're ready to get the McDonald's conditions to fairly submit to everybody.
Now...
We should get, we started on page six, what about page one?
I'm sorry?
You started on page six and went down, but what about the, we requested before that?
I think it was just from the waivers first.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right. Well, you went to another report, so I got a little better.
Is everyone okay with the granting of the waivers? Anyone, Kevin, any issues with the grant of the waivers?
No, that was no exception, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I went to page six because I viewed the first five pages as summary of the application. We do the parking variance, and so let's tell the board what the existing parking is, and what the parking calculation is, and what we're proposing in terms of number parking spaces.
Sure, right now, the site contains 62 parking spaces, that's throughout the site, both for the county and Kinnellworth Borough. We are proposing, we lose, one thing when you add a side-by-side, the reason you're adding it is because of the drive-through volume, because a lot of our customers, the majority of them are, are drive-through customers. And one of the side effects to adding one of these is usually, in order to provide proper bypass and, and promote food circulation, you usually lose a couple of parking spaces. So we are losing here, we are proposing to go down to 48 total parking spaces on site unless the, if the project is approved and constructed.
Okay, and there'll be some more, at least some traffic testimony and planning testimony on those things. But I, I think that's the only belief that we need, so you can correct, the professionals will correct me if I'm wrong. Well, site plan, oh, yes, site plan. So just, now I have the engineering report of February 6th. So if I go to page two, I'm only going to address the comments that I think require a response, and comment number three on the site plan notes that we, we do require a parking variance. Comment four says a stop sign, that stop truck shall be added to the driveway exiting out to Michigan Avenue. We can follow that?
Okay.
Under utilities, there's a request to provide testimony that the member of Stevens has an increase, therefore not requiring additional flow to the existing sanitary sewer.
I mean, we've never stayed inside a restaurant, we'll increase with different chances.
Okay, and under the landscaping, a mighty comment, and it's a recommendation of landscaping to be nasty for a few years, or replace it if necessary. We can follow that, correct?
Correct.
And then in terms of lighting, it says, it appears there are areas where the icing of the foot candles are zero. The light planning, the lighting plans, we revise to ensure that the parking area needs minimum lighting requirement.
Yes, there, that will be revised, there is actually a light bulb that wasn't modeled, so the site is actually a little bit, and we'll try to schedule it.
And I think that's all we need to address in the engineering report. And I think that's all we need to address in the engineering report. Of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question, under the TTS, the county approval, do you request to fix the curving along the front edge of Route 22?
No, the only, the only comment we got, from, the significant comments we got from the county were like to switch out this sidewalk and landscape. There might have been, can I pause, I don't have the light, I mean, there might have been a comment to replace any damaged curves that are out there now, but I don't think we can replace all the curves along there.
Would you be opposed to, I mean, the same curve, would you do repairs?
Yeah, yeah, that would be available, yeah. And there's DOT, another thing that we're going to do, DOT, this existing driveway, the western driveway, is currently a right-in, right-out, so it's kind of a right-in.
Any other questions for this witness?
Yes, Mr. Regal. You previously mentioned that 70% of the customers here, approximately 70% are drive-through. Was that for just this site or is that the nationwide?
It's, it's a common number for a lot of McDonald's, this site has a higher percentage.
Really?
That's why it's not the side-by-side, but the trend is to, that these days most of their customers are driving.
McDonald's, as you can imagine, it's a lot of data about this, and it does vary site to site, there are some sites that, it's not the case.
Would this site get higher than 70%, you think?
No, it's approximately 70.
So that's a national number, not specific to the store?
It's not specific to the store, but it's, it's, it's a very close approximation, I don't think it's around 65, 67%. I think they do average about 7.
So that element that you just talked about and the 50% reduction in queue will be in the traffic witness, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the net change in square footage? We have an addition on the northeast side and we have a deduction on the southwest side.
There's a, correct, we're taking a piece of the building off on this side and we're adding a small piece here just to basically square it off. The proposed building area is 5,495 square feet, trying to see if I have the existing.
That would, to be added to the building or is that a net?
Yeah, I wanted to know what the net reduction was.
I, I think there's a glitch on some of the reports, ours and yours, because it, you just said it's 5,495 square feet. On your traffic report, it says 2275 square feet, and on the report that I just saw from, I think Harvard's report, page two, number three says 2275 square feet. So it's just, there's some glitches in there, your report and ours, unless you're going to tell me that it's in Kenilworth or something like that.
Well, we have some answers for it.
The 22 square, 2275 square feet, that's the, that's the areas that can be accessed by the public. The area that I gave is the total footprint of the site.
But the 2275 is area accessed by the public, is that how the parking requirement is?
Uh, no, in, in Kenilworth, it is the whole, the whole area.
5,495.
Yeah, but there's some of the parking settings that they, they use differently for a lot of.
Okay, I, I didn't, again, I didn't know whether it was a typo, but then it's having in a couple of different spots, so.
And are the parking calculations based on the square footage of the building?
That's the driver for this, it's either one for three seats or the square footage of the building. What the requirement here would be, the driver for this site is the square footage of the building. It's one space for 75 square feet, and that would point to 73 spaces required for this building.
And that's a 5,495.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, on the union side, I just, right from the top, how many spaces are we losing that, that are there now that are not going to be there? How many, how many less?
Where are?
On this property?
Are you a total site?
Yeah, just think of the whole total site. Because we're losing all those spots on the, on the west side.
62 to 48.
So it's 14. Alright, 14, and then how many seats are being lost in that little extension that was sticking out by the drive-through?
I think there are possibly 13, 15 seats in there.
Yeah, something like that. So that's what, that's about six spots, right? And then, it's sort of fascinating, you're, you, you take that extension out and then you put another drive-through aisle, you're still keeping those, those parking spots there by the dumpster, by the enclosure, right?
Yeah, the spot.
Those, yeah, because it, it was, and then the building is, is obviously the square there in the picture. I see a big space there now, is that going to be something?
This near?
Yeah, is it? Yeah, I saw, I saw, it was all green, I was like, whoa. Yeah, that was very different than what we're used to seeing, yeah, that's amazing. That's, yeah, okay, that's impressive. And that's going to help with a lot, a lot of things, right? Question is, I, so we're going to be down 14 and, well, I mean, it's not that bad, right? Honestly, because you're cutting back some seats anyway. Yeah, yeah, so, okay, that's, that's pretty much answered, I was just, I mean, you know.
One more thing, I don't know if this is for you or somebody else. You redoing all the lanes, the curving, all the green area, redoing all the ADA, paving, curving, all that. Am I correct, at the back of the building, you're leaving the existing stack block wall and curving as it is today?
No, that's, that's, the wall, there's a screen wall that's back there now.
No, no, up against the building.
Up against the building.
The back of the building.
Correct.
Between the building and the drive-through, right there, between the cars and the building, I should say. That little island there of curving and, and a wall that's there.
That, that will, that fortunately is remaining back there, yes.
That's falling apart.
Well, we can definitely take a look at it and.
It's falling apart, with all this work, and to have that be left as the drawings call for it to be left, that shouldn't be. It really needs to be replaced to be, you're changing it, you're getting a look of everything else to be updated, like the national rollout, that should be fixed. It's in disrepair.
Well, certainly, obviously, there's a lot more than they typically do to these sites, so we'll certainly bring that up with the applicant and see if they can remember the place and the current mall.
It's in disrepair.
No.
Sorry? Yes, no, I'm saying, if this goes in a positive way, I'm going to make sure that would be a condition of approval. Now, what were you saying about the rear wall that separates you with the neighbor?
They're having, it's starting to fail.
Yeah, the sidewalk's like a skateboard.
So they're going to replace that wall with a new board-on-board fence.
You're taking that masonry wall and you're going to put it up with a wood fence?
Yes.
That has truck traffic on both sides of it?
Yes, that's what we're proposing.
And how long, how long do we, how long do we, what was that, it's going to last?
Well, it's maintained, it can last, it's making it last a whole lot.
That's sad to hear, okay. The change, block wall, curving. Northeast corner, you have that stripped off at the intersection of Michigan and 22? You have that little area stripped off between the parking spots?
Right here we go.
Yes.
Yes.
I would say it would be preferred to see a physical barrier, meaning like if that became green or planting or something. People want to park right there, service guys in the middle of the day, park my car, sit here, and they're cutting out the triangle.
Well, that's one of the issues that we have, it's all runoff, kind of comes this way, kind of out this way, so we'll have to make sure that we can still maintain that drainage channel without causing any issues, but I don't think that's a.
If we could get a physical barrier so people cannot park into that striped area, because it happens.
Yeah, we could do some backwards too, to block that off.
What about, Rob, what about like a curved landscape wall?
Yeah, just, you know, even.
Just a thought, I mean, we're not telling you what to do.
Yeah, no, it's just like, all of runoff, stormwater runoff, kind of all comes out this way, so that's why we kind of left this open, so it can kind of continue to go where it currently goes.
It could just be that the pavement's taken up and there's decorative stone placed in it so that people can't.
Yeah, well, you could put a hole in the curb too.
Well, there is a hole in the curb.
No, we're going to put a curved island up there.
Yeah, they can continue it.
Make a curb break, you can do something like that.
Right.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board for this witness? Mr. O'Brien, is there anything for this particular witness?
No, just Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
My next witness is our traffic consultant.
With regard to this application, do you swear your testimony shows you the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Andrew Feranda, F-E-R-A-N-D-A.
Thank you.
Mr. Feranda, who do you work for?
I work for Shropshire Associates.
And you're familiar with this board that was prepared and submitted by Shropshire Associates?
I was, I was, the company was retained to do the traffic study.
Correct. Give the board, please, your academic and professional credentials.
Sure, I'm a civil engineer, graduated Drexel University, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, also Pennsylvania. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer, PTOE, which is a higher certification in the traffic engineering field. I appear before more than 100, over 100 boards. I review traffic for Cranbury Township, Freehold Township, Allentown, New Jersey, and several other municipalities. I appear before county boards as well.
Thank you, everyone accept the credentials?
Yes. Okay, so let's, let's go to your report, do we need to mark the reports after they were, it was submitted?
No.
Okay. All right, so give the board a summary, a summary of your report, starting with existing conditions and traffic counts.
Sure, existing conditions, the site has 62 parking spaces, some of the existing conditions that were talked about earlier. The site has two access driveways along Route 22, one access driveway along Michigan. The parking is mostly in Kenilworth, there is some parking, I believe there's 25 spaces in Union currently, and there's 37 spaces in Kenilworth. There will be a net reduction of 14 spaces, that would include a loss of five spaces in Kenilworth, so it'll go from 37 to 32. And then there'll be a loss of nine spaces in Union. The loss of spaces, I might note that the building, the existing building is mostly located in Union, 10 to 20% is in Kenilworth. So the parking that's being provided on Kenilworth, if it's per the building that is in Kenilworth, we're actually providing more parking in Kenilworth for the building that's in Kenilworth. I might add, the parking requirement that was noted earlier is 73 based on your ordinance, which is one space for every 75 square foot of building space. The number that was talked about before, 2275, that's the public area space, and that's the number that's used in Union to do the calculation for parking. It's one space for every 50 square feet of public space, this will be eating space, the area that the public uses.
Yeah, that, not to interrupt your spiel, but that, that wasn't clear in your report. I mean, I, and I'm trapping back on that too, but that wasn't clear in your second paragraph, it just went from 62, 73, 50, 46 versus 48, there's 50 in there. It's 2275, and 5,495 doesn't come into play until.
I agree with you.
I'm just saying.
The total building space wasn't even identified in there, which.
Right, I'm just saying.
And the reason that may have occurred is our first approval, our first goal of the report was to get the Union approval. And we were going towards the Union standard, which was 2275-1.
Right.
So again, we then dual-purposed our report, submitted it to the board here, and we didn't do as good a job of including that total square foot of the building, which is what your ordinance is based on. That's the reason that happened, but the total requirement is 73 spaces based on the total square foot of the building. In Union, the requirement is 46 spaces. We will be left with 48 spaces, and therefore, for Union's purposes, one space for 50 square foot of the public area, 2275. We met that requirement with the 48 spaces having two additional spaces, so we didn't need a parking variance in Union.
But we still have to justify parking variance here, so let's get into traffic counts and explain why you think parking is pretty wrong.
As part of our parking study, we did counts, we did counts of the existing facility during the morning, afternoon, and evening on a typical weekday, and then on a Saturday. We did our counts from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, we did it in the afternoon, in the midday, 11:00 to 2:00, and the afternoon was 4:00 to 6:00. Based on our finding on a typical weekday, there were nine parking spaces used in the morning, maximum parking space, that occurred twice, at 7:45 and at 9:00. In the afternoon, there were 41 spaces used at 12:45, that was the maximum used. It occurred once, most of the parking was 32, 30, or less for the rest of the parking counts. Let me step back a second, when we did parking counts, we did it every 15 minutes, we'd have somebody circulate through the site and count the number of parking spaces being used. So starting at 7:00, we counted all the parking spaces being used, 7:15, did another round, counted all the parking spaces, 7:30, did another round. And we recorded each 15-minute interval, what the parking being used for overall site, for complete site, 62 spaces available, these were the parking spaces used. Again, AM, there was nine, in the afternoon, there was 40, but most of the intervals through the three hours were 32 or less. In the afternoon, there were 24 maximum spaces used, and then on a Saturday, there were 22 maximum spaces used, and that's over the three hours on a Saturday. It was over the two and a half hours on a evening timeframe. So basically, what we're saying in our report is, the maximum peak 15 minutes of use came at 12:45 on a typical weekday for lunchtime. And it was 41 spaces, which is less than the 48 spaces that will be available for the site once the improvements are made. And again, the improvements are being made not only to resurface, but they're reorganizing the parking spaces. There's one-way circulation in the Kenilworth area, right now, that's not as well-defined, there's some parking spaces that are perpendicular. With the new parking layout, the parking aisles are going to be one-way circulation, and the parking, angled parking reinforces the one-way circulation, so that they flow through the site. The aisles are made to be 18 feet for the one-way circulation. Again, there's going to be a loss of five parking spaces from 37 down to 32. On the other side, there'll be a loss of the nine spaces down to 16 spaces. And that's where most of the improvements for the drive-through will be occurring on the Union side. You've heard earlier, testimony that 70%, they expect 70% of their business to be through the drive-through. If there's 70% of the business being used through the drive-through, that means there's less business, people parking. This is fast food, it's convenience, they're looking to process the orders quicker using the drive-through two boards. And now they have 15 spaces for vehicles to queue, and it's important to process. The concern is you don't want the queue backing out on 22, so they have two boards now to process orders, and then vehicles can get into the queue and proceed towards the pickup. We also did counts of the drive-through, when we were doing parking, we've noticed the stacking that occurred from the drive-through window under existing conditions with the one menu board. In the morning, there were six vehicles, maximum of six vehicles queued at 8:15. In the afternoon, it was a maximum of 10 vehicles queued at, two times, 12:45 and 1:15. In the PM, there were seven vehicles queued at 4:15, and on Saturday, there were 11 vehicles queued at 1:15. So the goal here is to process the drive-through orders quicker, and also to provide enough queuing that we wouldn't interfere with the access or circulation on site.
So is it your professional opinion that this plan improves internal traffic flow and safety?
It is my professional opinion that the circulation will be improved, access, as was mentioned, DOT is requiring inbound only at the one driveway, that's going to help. And again, the parking, in my professional opinion, and based on. And again, the parking, in my professional opinion, and based on the counts and observations, is more than adequate for the proposed improvements, including the better processing and the more convenient use of the drive-through.
Question. You just said DOT's required ingress only at that driveway? That's not what's shown on our plan. You just said that, right? Or did you misspeak?
The plan hasn't been revised yet, but that was one of the comments that we recently got from you. It was a DOT comment we had.
This is the approved plan that we got from you, and subsequent to that, we got DOT comments, just as we have to make some revisions for the county, we'll have to do with DOT.
So, so this is ingress only on the left, right?
Ingress on the west driveway.
Yes. Only, only ingress that way?
Right.
Well, that one, that was shown, right?
Entrance, exit.
Right. So, the circulation around, how does that, does that really help you, or does that really hurt you? Because now, I mean, I guess, as they're coming in, and they're bypassing the drive-through because I want to go inside, I go in, I come around, I'm looking for a parking spot, I can't find it, I come back out, and I get in the loop, and I can't get out, and I'm in a continuous loop?
You can go in and out on Michigan Avenue.
Yeah. No, well, I understand that, but I'm talking about this thing here, on top, on the northerly. I'm just asking, yeah, that section here. What is that section, how does that section get affected by only having an ingress to the left of your figure?
This would be what I call recirculation. This isn't a major flow. The major flow is going to be through the drive-through, 70 percent, and it's going to exit here. So, entrance around the building and exit. This will be used should something go wrong with the order, and they need to park, if they have the wait for order, there'll be parking spaces on this side. They can recirculate, but we don't expect that.
I thought, I thought that would also serve as a recirculation to get out for the driver that, again, that was out, keep coming in, I want to go inside, I can't find a parking spot, oh, I guess I got to leave. So, to get back out, but they can't get back out. But, that's just my observation.
Well, that, that area has to circulate Michigan Avenue, because you can be coming in off of Michigan Avenue and want to go to the drive-through, right?
Correct. That will also circulate Michigan Avenue, correct. And that circulation will come in Michigan through the center driveway and circulate around, yes.
Okay. That was one. Number two, you mentioned that the new plan, a proposed plan, has 15 cars in queue now? What did you have before? You have allowance for 15 cars to queue, which was going to make better, you mentioned that?
Yeah. The queue tighter to the building, we have 11 vehicles as a maximum counted queue, so there's at least space for the 11 vehicles. But, again, that's tighter to the building. As we bring it out, we're extending it away from the building, so it's adding a couple of spaces, plus you have some space on the other side.
That, I'm asking these questions because I liked your responses on how you supported the report, because I had my, my questions on it, and I, you know, the 70 percent reduction, or the 70 percent drive-through customer is okay, the fact that you're nationwide report. Somebody made a statement before, I think, other witness, about that there was going to be a 50 percent reduction in queue due to the new side-by-side, but yet, when you look at that, unless you increase the queue, or the queue length, or, you know, it only looks like you're getting another three cars or four cars in that side-by-side. So, how is that...
The percentage reduction was in process time, not in queue.
Yeah, in delay time, right. In process time, right. Okay, but, I guess I don't understand the McDonald's logic then. I mean, how, how do you reduce it by 50 percent, by only getting a couple more cars?
Let me just roughly give you...
Before you do, because there's double, there's double order complaints now. That's why, there's, there's new menu boards, and there's, two, two cars can order at once.
Just two people taking orders.
Okay, fine, but I...
Well, there's, there's one issue with that, because, you know, I'm a frequent patron of McDonald's. They all still end at a single window to pick up the food. So, it allows orders to happen faster, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to be able to pick up any faster.
You know, they're doing this all process time.
I understand, I just said I'm a frequent...
They don't, they don't, they're spending a lot of money, and they don't do it lightly, and they don't do it without studying it.
Right. And I understand. And, and my last question is, again, another observation, I think Mr. Comparat mentioned it before, so the fact that you're chopping off a piece of the building, and you're chopping off, I guess, some of where the dining area was, I guess, in further support of the fact that you have less parking existing than what is required, and you're reducing it further because of your actual counts, the fact that you're chopping off some of the dining area, is there possibly less spots inside the building for people to actually sit, to actually use, you know, that would kind of like support, why should I, why would I... How do I say this? However many people were, wanted to come and dine before and park, now there's going to be less space for them to dine, because there's not going to be enough tables, because you're chopping off the building, right?
Correct. Earlier testimony was that there was a loss of like 18, 15...
13 seats.
13 seats. So, there'll be less seats, there'll be more drive-through processing. This is all consistent. They're seeing convenience take over, and that people want to use the drive-through. We all go to night tunnels. Everybody wants to stay in their car, especially on a rainy day, you're going to use the drive-through. Less seats in the building is consistent with processing through the drive-through. And yes, if you lose 13 seats, your ordinance says, one parking space for three seats. We didn't use that requirement, because it was the lesser of the two. The square foot gave us the higher requirement. But, roughly, if there was 13 seats, it might be another four spaces that would not be needed. Again, based on your ordinance, we will require 73, but we're only losing five of the 37 existing parking spaces.
Yes, I, I think it's fair to say that their analysis is that they have too many seats now, and that's why they're removing.
No. I'm, I'm asking these questions because, in general, I don't like giving out variances, especially for existing non-conformance and making it less, but in addition. So, to convince myself, I'm asking these questions. You've satisfied my questions, so thank you.
Fair enough. It may help if you guys describe, there's three drive-through windows now, correct? On the sliver of building that's in Kennelworth.
There's a pay window, they call it pay window, and a pickup window.
Where's your rendered application?
Houston, hey, I guess.
Aren't there three points?
That's an, one's an entrance now, on the bottom?
There's three windows.
There's three drive-through windows.
One might be a walk-in.
That's what I was thinking. It doesn't look bad.
Did you remove the door? Yes.
So, I was saying that, because I thought that would help your argument of faster throughput, which would cut down your 50 percent queuing, because you pay at the one window, or you have two points of pay and one point of pickup, kind of like they do on Hillside.
Right now, that's not proposed to be a drive, this is not proposed to be a drive-through window, it's just a...
It's a decorative?
Yeah, decorative. This will be the pay, this will be the pickup, as you can see on here. So, there, what happens with McDonald's, a single lane drive-through, the kitchen can, they can make, they can crank out the food, and the, the drive-through can't keep up with them, basically. So, the side-by-side, they can process the orders faster, basically keep up in the kitchen, and that's how they reduce their big times.
So, it's possible to keep us through, but it won't have things to do with it?
I think it's, I think it's decorative.
Symmetry. Symmetry.
Exactly. Trying to end the connection, yeah, I've seen that before.
Anything else for this?
I don't know if it even applies, but, I mean, I drive by that site every single day, and the only time, and I agree with, you know, from my non-scientific observations of the site, as far as the parking load on the site, the only time I've seen a problem is when party city across the street during Halloween.
Yes.
And they use your parking lot, you know, and it's pretty dangerous when you're coming around 22 and you're going around. Now, that, I don't see anything that you could possibly do about that, but unless there's a sign, or, you know, you guys should, maybe, might want to consider some, but you probably already have something. Maybe there's possibly no parking, or...
Gun barrels on the roof.
You can't keep much of that track racing over there. You can't hold a gun.
Per your architectural site, architectural floor plan, it's a drive-through window. Whether it's going to be used or not, but it's a drive-through.
I think it's in reserve.
I've seen it.
I've seen them used.
Right now, they don't do this. They kind of, they call it driver optimization, there's space out, which has more, so they got 50 more cars in that.
Symmetry.
Because you can't get three cars in a current drive-through, where does that say it consists right now?
Would they use it during high volume, maybe, to, to hand food out quicker?
I think it's, will be used if necessary. I think they're going to operate with two, and if they think that it's, they use it instead of the mall, then they're going to use it. Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So, did anybody else from the board have any other questions for the traffic expert? Okay. Did the professionals have any questions for the traffic expert?
First one, that is, for your parking calculation, do you like to see calculations, see how many seats are occupied at any given time, or the discussion that you're using?
No, we did not go inside the building and count the number of seats that were removed.
Is there any data McDonald's has to contact? I'm hearing the generalization, we need those seats.
And basically, what you're getting is how many people per car, or how many seats being used, or parking space being used. I don't know where that data is.
Chris, did you have anything for...
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's what, it's on plan.
Read your right hand, with regard to this application, do you swear your testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
It's Paul Ricky, RLCCI.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricky, give the board the benefit of your professional credentials and your educational background.
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year 2000.
If I may, Chairman, Mr. Ricky has appeared before us on numerous occasions, and provided his license is selective. I would recommend it to the board.
It is, and thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
So, Mr. Ricky, tell us why you think this parking variance ought to be granted?
Okay. From planning perspective, I, I think I can be brief, if you think. As part of my planning review, I look at the entire application. I think it's clear that this is an application of betterment. The condition of the site today, it's an old, it's the old design, the building is in fair condition. The old design isn't the most attractive, you have white candy brick, a red old-style mansion roof. I think if any board members have seen the new design, it's more of a neutral tone color, it's, it's modern, the signage is scaled to the building. It's a nicer look. And McDonald's is doing more than that. It's not just the building, they're repaving all the lots, and they're putting a substantial amount of landscaping in here as well. We didn't hear exact numbers, but over 600 plantings on the site, and a significant improvement on the Michigan Avenue, Route 22 corner. And when I looked through your planners' report, it seemed that this is a gateway overlay zone. This clearly establishes and meets several purposes of your master plan, in terms of meeting your gateway improvements, and, and to essentially beautify this site. Okay. From the engineering perspective, we heard there's ADA improvements as well occurred, and the site will be safer as due to the, the site circulation and the like. So, this application clearly meets the positive criteria of the municipal land use law, meets purpose A, promotes general welfare, purpose G provides suitable locations to meet the needs of commercial users, and purpose I, promotes a desirable visual environment. And also, you can argue, promotes the free flow of traffic, as well as, if the queuing is reduced, that promotes free-flowing of traffic on Route 22 as well. Regarding the parking variance in particular, I am a municipal planner in five communities, I represent nine boards, and I think the applicant was very conservative in indicating the variance being requested. The majority of the building is in Union Township. Technically, it's my opinion that really, you can only regulate what you, what's part of your community. So, we were very conservative. This, but, but this application would meet the Union standard, and we just want to be overly conservative. So, realistically, the parking that's needed here by, by variance, I think is actually less than the 73 spaces that we're demonstrating. But, from my standpoint as a planner, I think the key is that, that we are providing sufficient parking, and based on the counts and the information provided by our, our traffic engineer. And what I want to say in respect of, I mean, I think we all recognize that, that parking is, is very user-driven, right? So, the best information that you can have is actually the data supported by the traffic engineer. And what I mean by that, a shop, by example, may have a significantly higher parking need than an Acme byway, example, but per the municipal code, you have the same parking requirement. So, by having that detailed information by the traffic engineer that studied the needs of this site, I think I feel confident as a planner that adequate parking is being provided, and we do have surplus parking as well. So, in terms of the negative criteria, that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good, that's the surrounding property orders, and the intent and purpose of your zone plan, that really, that we're providing adequate parking, I think we clearly demonstrate that that's being met, and, and since we're providing adequate parking, we're not going to have a detriment to surrounding property orders, and all the benefits associated with the application clearly, I think, outweigh the detriments, which I don't think really are, there are any, considering that adequate parking is being provided. And for these reasons, I think this is a very good application that meets both the positive and negative criteria requirements for this board to consider or enact on the variance.
Anyone on the board have any questions for the expert?
So, I, if no one else does, then I, then I have a question. And while, while you might think that the board is being a bit overzealous in its line of questioning and, and requirements, as you mentioned, this is a gate, you know, gateway, and it's one of two properties that are seen as people enter the borough from Route 22. So, from our perspective, it's very important to us, and despite the fact that the building might be, the majority of which in Union, the property is still half in Union, half in Kennelworth. So, again, and we're the ones that, basically, as you drive in off of 22, most people, I think, assume it's Kennelworth, despite the fact that half of the, or the majority of the buildings. So, having said all that, one of the things, if you looked at our gateway requirements, is some type of signage that identifies that visitors are entering the borough of Kennelworth. So, we're wondering if, or I'm wondering if McDonald's would be interested, or...
Ameable.
Ameable.
Walk in the Kennelworth, like, wood carved types.
Yes, exactly. With your finger.
I think they usually make them out of synthetic materials, but that has that wood carved on it.
Then, that puts us in a little bit of an awkward position, because we have to get the permission of the landlord to do that, do that. And I've, I've been through this a number of times here in New Jersey, where the board says, well, why don't you just do this? And I said, well, I can only do things that my client can control, my client can't control. Well, why don't you go see if you can do that, and if you can't, come back here, and we'll give you...
Well, I mean, we can make it a condition.
You can, you can, you can make it a condition.
We're hoping that we can.
All right. And I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that you don't, because I've had a lot of bad experience with this, and in...
McDonald's doesn't own the property?
Yes, yes.
They don't own the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Don't you have to come back and revise all these plans to accommodate DOT's ingress? So, I mean, if you came back as a condition, you could either put it on or not put it on.
Sorry, let me, let me correct that, because it's confusing. We, so, this, and this is going to help you. We lease the portion in Union. We own the portion in Kennelworth. So, I have to withdraw what I said before. Now, what it will depend on is, in court, is where it's located and what it looks like.
Can a tenant be willing to work with you out of the...
And that would obviously be, DOT would come into that play, or? That had door, county.
Yeah. And again, and the county, and DOT, and the county, and so...
If they do it in Union, Union may want to, may want to see it again if it's on the Union side of the...
Well, I mean, we would want it on the Union side, yeah.
No, but, but on that piece. So, it would be, obviously, we would want it on Kennelworth side. Right.
Kevin? Excuse me, sir. I, one, I'm not interrupting, but one possible location, but it might have issues, but it is the spot we mentioned before. is the spot we mentioned before about the corner where people are parking, the northeast corner, but then as long as it didn't interfere with site distance, you know, or site blockage.
You might want to put it as far south as possible on this one to get it out at DOT jurisdiction and.
Welcome to Kenilworth and party city customers do not mark.
Welcome. Say that we'll work with your professionals. We'll endeavor to do that, but I can't have it as an absolute condition that we have to do it because I don't know that we can.
Well, yeah, that's it's up to the board to decide if it's going to be an absolute.
I I understand.
But yeah, I mean, that that would be, I think it's a reasonable request, let's put that. Or we can make a condition that the applicant shall work with our, with the board professionals in a good faith effort to.
And if our board professionals deem it possible.
In a, in a good faith effort to attempt to put a welcome to Kenilworth sign, you know, something like that.
Yes.
That's our intent, but we know it's not ironclad if your property owner says no.
Yeah, yeah, well, if it's in Kenilworth, then we're on the property. So we're we're past that hurdle.
Oh, I thought you leased Kenilworth.
No, we leased, we leased Union, we own Kenilworth.
Okay.
And we'll try, we'll, we'll try to do that. We'll work with your professionals and and if it makes sense, we'll do it.
As a basis of the board, we would use the other welcome signs as a model.
Excellent.
Gateway signs, yeah.
And actually, I, if you don't mind, I have another question I'd like to ask the board. So for, and and this may not be the right forum, but I'm going to ask it anyway and you'll you'll tell me and your council will tell me. For permitting purposes, it would be difficult for us to go to to municipalities. And so we're hoping that, we were expecting to go to Union to get construction permits. Are we going to be required to also come to Kenilworth for for construction permits?
Understanding that, yes. Yeah, we can't, if we can't ask another municipality, as you can understand, to to expect and provide permitting on on Kenilworth, there's an issue of fees to be mercenary about it, but there's all, you know, we need to keep, the Union needs to keep their inspectors on their property and we need to keep our inspectors on our property. I understand the practicalities of it, but but we, I don't think we would want to turn over that project, part of that project to Union. I don't know how much more time it would take. I mean, are we talking about a major hurdle here or?
I don't believe so.
It's just an extra set of.
We have a number of properties on this travel board and inspectors have worked together.
I'm concerned that if, you know, you make one municipality happy but not the other, that one.
You may find that your construction official will defer to you. You may find that.
But as of now, the official response, I think, from this board would be, you need to come here, you know, for the Kenilworth property.
I'm talking about the building property. I wouldn't be surprised if your construction.
Okay, okay.
All right, well, we'll have to pursue.
Yep. And Mr. Chairman, if I, if I sounded negative, I thought, I think you'd be very happy with the improvements here, so.
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, we've been living with an eyesore for many years, so anything would be an improvement.
I need to be diminished, I guess.
Yeah, and I was going to say by way of closing, if I, if I could get to that, that I think, you know, we're all very familiar with with your gateway ordinance and what it what it requires. And we know that this is a gateway in the Kenilworth. And we think what's going to make this site look a heck of a lot better and that you're going to be happy with it. Lot more landscaping, much better architecture look than what you have today. So, and I think we gave you traffic testimony, we gave you expert planning testimony. I think that this one variance, based on the traffic counts, based on compliance with the both the positive and negative criteria and compliance with with your master plan and gateway ordinance, that I think, I think there's a really strong basis for the variance. And so I'm hoping the board will give us, grant us the site plan approval, the waivers that we discussed and the and the parking variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
Council has done with case. I had a number of comments on page two. I already thought they were not to get.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I love who's been addressing this.
Oh, okay.
One file away and we'll figure it out.
Kevin, what report are we looking at now?
On my report, the eighth of February, page two, I have three planning comments.
Okay.
How about you?
Yes. But you can't leave the room.
We have, we have to open the meeting to the public and.
Page three, second paragraph.
Oh, the plantings. They are proposing, you know, they are proposing drivers and plantings because of, they don't want to install sprinklers, you know.
Second paragraph.
The plantings are enough of this day and inclusion generated by the vast quantity of vehicles passing the site daily. Would you answer that question if you asked? They're basically mimicking what's out there now, just adding some more. So the idea is to kind of match what's in this area and just kind of stay in that along here.
Some of them aren't doing so well.
It could be because of age.
They've been there a long time. Did you want me to?
So you want on number four?
Sure.
So the trash enclosure, I know you've requested a rent there. Unfortunately, we don't have the time to get one ready, but it is a, it's going to be, it's a concrete machinery trash enclosure. The reason they are replacing it, that was a requirement of Union Township to replace the trash enclosure. It exists and it's actually functioning fine, but Union is requiring the applicant to replace this trash enclosure with an enclosure that has a roof over it because they don't want, there's a reason being they don't want rainwater to get in with their waste and then get out into the storm drain system. So it'll have a roof over it. In addition, it will have a drain in the middle that connects to their sanitary sewer systems or any leakage from garbage cans doesn't fit in the storm drain system. So it's it's an upgrade, but it'll look like, it'll be painted the same color as the building. So it'll basically be the color of the building with the, you know, a hell of a wood roof with no flag on it, I believe. So same, it's approximately the same size, it might be an inch or two smaller than the existing one, but approximately the same.
There's another trash enclosure to the east towards Michigan Avenue shows that there's a box under it.
That's the transformer.
That's the transformer?
Yes. We're proposing fencing around that, so.
What kind of fencing?
It's the same wood board on board, basically.
The board may want to think about that from a personal interest. I'm okay with the lighting, but you're going to revise it to show the new.
There was a light that wasn't modeled, so it shows incorrectly that there's some, that there's, you know, front windows and southwest, southeast corner of the site where it's actually to be well developed out there tonight.
That's hilarious. You didn't show what the lock fixtures look like?
There'll be an LED bright handle, but it's really can survive some information to.
Shoebox to cut off or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. How does the interplay of the other approvals work with Kenilworth Borough? You've got to go back to DOT, you've got to, you'll make revisions based upon the conditions that this board puts on and then you go to the other agencies. Does that work?
Well, yeah, so our, our goal, we're going to incorporate everybody's condition down once we've already started, we're waiting. This is our, kind of the last stop, basically. And then we're going to resubmit to not only Kenilworth, the Union, the county and DOT. DOT's comments were very minor, it's mostly just having some signage, eliminating this right turn striking and having some signage to indicate that it's an entrance only.
So those revisions will come back here then before they go up the line?
Well, they'll come, and we want to skip to everybody concurrently, recently, so you'll see the change that we've made per any DOT's comments as well.
Will you provide your comments to us?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Okay, everybody else on the board is good. Mr. Quetta, you're good. Okay, so I have a motion to open the hearing to the public.
Make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Aye.
Motion made by Mr. Perry, signed by Mr. Fantino, in favor.
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Okay, this application is open to the public for comment. If there's anyone out there who would like to make a comment on the record regarding this application, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, can I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so, okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Grimaldi, signed by Mr. Fantino, in favor.
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Okay.
Is that it? Mr. Lippert, you're done?
I'm done.
All right, so.
Do we have a list of conditions?
Yeah, first, the board is dealing with, as you know, the preliminary final site plan approval of variance for parking. You've granted the waivers that were set forth in Kevin's report. The, in addition to our normal conditions that we put in every application in terms of taxes and pay your fees and those kinds of things, we have the reports of our professionals. We have, we talked about the northeast corner of the property, doing something with that corner to discourage parking or a number of ideas thrown out, but we might have, might have that sign, the welcome sign there, so I don't know how you want, I don't know how you want to play that. I heard putting stones there, I heard putting a wall there, plantings. How do we want to, just leave it, the applicant shall do something in regard to discouraging parking in that, in the north, is it northeast?
Northeast.
Northeast corner of the site, unless we have a specific.
Can the condition be that working with our professionals to place the sign and to prevent parking in that area?
Yes.
Yeah, because the sign issue, if it comes, if it's a site obstruction, that's, that's off the court, for that location anyway. You want, parking issue is still an issue.
All right, remove sign and discourage the parking. Yeah.
Okay, if anybody else on the board would agree with me, I'd like to make a condition that they repair the curving and the block around the back of the building where 70% of the customers are going to drive by and it looks in disrepair.
So.
I second you.
Well, I want to issue that's in Union.
No, well, oh, yeah, well, most, well, most of it's in Union.
Would you, we know it's in Union, but would you, did Union do anything about that issue? Did they?
This is the plan that was approved and my concern is if, if, if you change materially what's been approved in Union, then I gotta go back there for for another site plan review and I was frankly hoping to avoid that.
But don't you have to go back with an amended plan, the Union, based on DOT's requirement to make the driveway ingress?
We do, but I, but I'm more of a, if I'm wrong, we're going to submit those plans, Karen, and because the Union resolution, of course, is subject to county and DOT.
Okay.
And that wouldn't necessarily implicate that I have to go back for whole site plan. But if I start changing things on the site that were not requirements of other outside agencies, then I might have, I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know you're asking to change it, just inherit.
No, yeah, I, again, I.
And it's also with what your, your exhibit that you are presenting to us, upper right hand corner of exhibit two, rear elevation, that's not what's there. So you're misrepresenting what you're, what's the factual basis.
Well, it's, it's possible that we made an error. I would suggest that misrepresentation is.
Okay, so what, what I'm suggesting is that since it is in disrepair, it needs to be repaired so that the curving is all functioning and the block wall is not falling down.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say.
What was the language, curving and? I can't imagine that a municipality would object to just repair it. Just do it.
Replace the curving and the block, stock, the stack block wall.
And rear property.
That is in disrepair.
I think it's.
To more match the representation that they've presented to us.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Rego.
Yes.
On sheet C3, I'm telling you, on sheet C3, letter Q is exactly the area that you, letter Q says existing block wall to remain and be protected in place. So basically, we want, well, we're suggesting that, that be modified, be repaired and we're associating.
Replaced.
Yeah.
You could tell who the engineers are on the board. I also had the reports and recently we just talked about working with the professionals, ran a welcome to Kenilworth sign. Apparently there are other signs that can be used as models in terms of location, size. Those are the specific over and above regarding variety conditions that we would have. Kevin, do you think of anything else? We will, we'll put it.
Well, all the plans will be revised.
Right.
Okay.
And approval of the fixtures?
And the fixtures will be shown or approved, yep, thank you.
And the curving along.
Yeah, yeah, plants have been revised per the recommendations in your, your reports.
Actually, the curving wasn't in my report.
Okay.
And you, did you want to say something about Kenilworth doing the inspections?
Yeah, why don't we, I mean, from a jurisdictional point of view, just so that there's no misunderstanding, we would want to, we would have the, we have jurisdiction, we're, Kenilworth is jurisdiction, Kenilworth needs to be the owner of that, so we'll do it that way.
We could give the structural discretion as to.
Sure.
How they normally do this.
Sure.
And the board want to discuss the wood fence stuff.
The one, right, the transformer?
No, the, replacing that.
Oh, the back, the back roof. But again, that's Union.
Yeah, but from that, from that standpoint to Michigan, it's Kenilworth and it's.
Well, yes.
Actually, the wall, the stop, the block, brick wall stops somewhere along that line.
Are the transformers?
Yeah. Yeah, because that goes to the part of the neighbor.
What would you, right now, they're proposing, what, board on board?
It stops just before the transformer, like two spots before the transformer.
So what would you, what would you?
Maybe 20 feet.
I don't think it's a.
I don't have any.
Some hang that night on.
Right, I don't have any, so anybody else?
I think I've seen this before, they use it, all the other places are upgraded and it's basically the same. I'm sure McDonald's not going to put up a wall, it's going to fall down or be too cheap or something, but I prefer the brick wall myself. What about that around the transformers, is it safe to put something like that, a thin piece of wood?
As long as it's gated all the way around.
That should be my, I'd be more concerned about the transformer.
Okay. So is there anyone on the board who would like to make a motion either for or against the, the application?
Make a motion.
With the conditions, obviously, if it's.
Which you'll see, yeah. Obviously.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions cited by Mr. Rego and my professionals.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, give a motion in a second. Do we, throw a call vote?
Greg David?
Uh, yes.
Robert Grimaldi?
Yes.
Mick Fantina?
Yes.
Frank Mazzio?
Yes.
Joe Colala?
Yes.
Anthony Capata?
Yes.
And Ryan Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank the board for all your attention and and your comments, especially for making the sacrifice of coming out on Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
The flowers are horrible, right?
Can I have a motion to go back into session?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion made by Mr. Jones, signed by Mr. Perry, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry, we're back in session. Next up is application 369, ADHP Real Estate.
Next up is application 369, ADHP Real Estate LLC.
Gary Goodman, on behalf of the applicant, thank you, gentlemen, for Valentine's Day hearing us, my wife's very appreciative. This ADHP is a real estate LLC that is owned by Devika Patel. Her husband, Harshad Patel, is a micro-altern medical entrepreneur. Seven of the nine uses that you're going to hear tonight are going to be controlled by Dr. Patel. 1700 Galping Hill Road is an existing office building. It is surrounded by a cemetery, the Parkway, and the pharmaceutical company Merck across the street. We sort of are an island unto ourselves. Everything that occurs there will stay there. We have no impact on our neighbors. If anything goes wrong on site, I don't see anybody being impacted in any of the other neighborhoods in Kenilworth. I have a number of witnesses to tonight, and I know that time is short. I have the engineer, Ed Deck. I have an architect, Bob Zatone. I have an architect planner, James Kapalis, and we have a traffic and parking expert, Lee Klein. With that, let me say that we've had a lot of interaction with your planner. One of the uses that was highlighted in his report as really complicating this whole application was the child daycare, and we have eliminated that use. There was also a concern with regard to the trailer, and the trailer is a very costly device. It cannot be contained in the building. It is a multimillion-dollar device that is brought in for diagnosis purposes, and this is only operational on Saturday and Sunday. So the idea that it is going to impact the weekly flow of people into the site is minimal. What I'd like to stress here is that a lot of the uses which Dr. Patel is proposing for this site are the type of uses that have limited parking needs simply because the people are driven to the site. Dialysis, radiology, there are adult daycare. These are not people who will be driving themselves to the site. Hence, there is less of a parking need. James Kapalis will go into that in greater detail. But as you consider all these things, one of the comments of your planner was, well, what happens if one of these uses goes out? And as I think his example was, a pediatrician comes in with hundreds of parents screaming kids, et cetera. We're prepared as a condition if these specific uses that Dr. Patel go out, but we have no problem coming back here if we have to replace it. We understand that your concern here is about not having enough parking, but as I hope and believe our testimony will demonstrate, these are unique uses. Most of the uses that Dr. Patel has proposed have a lot to do with the diagnosis of cancer, and these uses interact with each other, and his plan here for this building is to introduce the type of services that are required, unfortunately, for an aging population. So without further ado, I'd like to call Ed Deck.
Mr. Deck, you, just, gentlemen, just to kind of set some ground rules, the board is going to, hopefully won't go that long, but if we reach 11:00 PM, we're going to adjourn the meeting and have to carry it to, you know, next month. So we just want to set that in advance.
Mr. Deck, you were here on January 10th. You were sworn in as an engineer. The board accepted you. I'm assuming your licenses are still up to snuff?
They're still current.
Okay. I would suggest to the board that we just continue with Mr. Deck.
Thank you.
Mr. Deck, will you please go through the board, go through your exhibit, which I believe is part of the exhibits that have been provided to the board. They don't need to be marked. Is that correct?
That's correct. The uneasy, I have the site plan, four sheets and same plans to board members.
Please tell the board what exists there now. Excuse me, Gary, I wanted to mention that Mr. O'Brien and Chris are, Christian, are, were sworn in earlier this evening, and their sworn status remains the same for this application. Okay. I'm sorry.
Am I speaking loud enough, or do I need to...
No, I think it, I didn't hear anything.
Okay.
Just specify which the dates of the...
I'll do that right there. On this variously, site plan is distributed to board members, titled 1700 Galping Hill Road, Block 2, Block 1, 2, 3, 10, Jersey, last revised 112, 2003. Sheet one, cover sheet, we have on the left-hand corner, the zoning chart. Below that is our park calculation compared to town's requirements of parking. We have, we'll set up a sheet, a 200-foot radius map, as you can see by the surface of the surrounding properties, as Mr. Jim pointed out, our property is the one that's got the hash mark in it, 200-foot circle. You can see surrounds that. Everything else, the cemetery, Merck's on the parkway. To the right of that is the zoning map. You can also see this map here, we're surrounded by a cemetery to our east, the park property of Galping Hill Block 1, and health care to the north, partly immediately to our west, and then there is some high-end commercial and other retail and commercial uses, but that's on the other side of the park. And of course, merchants immediately to the south. Our plan being to have the zoning table, and we are placing out the size of the property. All of the bulk requirements are met with this application. They're not exceeding, if there are any such as the maximum lot coverage, we've got three names to say, although it does exceed the allowable bulk of purpose coverage.
None are being made worse, if they're existing to them.
None are being made worse. That's correct, all of the bulk requirements. We have, last count, on my chart, 257. I tried to do that a number of times. I keep coming up with one or two different right now. I'm at 254. I hope it comes to 257, I do again. But right now, I'm at 254, existing stalls.
And given the time factor and the fact that we have a parking expert testifying, I would ask that the board defer parking calculations and questions to the experts who are going to testify to that. With regard to the addition of the parking barriers, we have a number of waivers we're asking for?
That's correct. And I'll do to, we have this, our legal plan, as you point to see, the plan, our list of waivers, and it just says, this point.
Going to go up to new planners, right?
Yes, the new, and we're dated, February. Yes.
Waiver drawn, please.
Thanks. The waivers that we are requesting, this is storm drain, this plan showing location of endless ice, swells, and other features. On sheet one, which are two, four, is what's the, kind of the existing condition plan. And on the lower portion of the plan, we have the ground, and that will be where all of the drainage features are situated. We do have a number of inlet situated throughout the site. We have the grade elevation shown, we have spot grades shown throughout the site. One of the waivers we're asking, as far as this is concerned, is to show what the inverts and pipe suckers are. We're asking for a waiver for that because since the existing condition is not changing, we're not adding any additional runoff, that's the waiver we're looking for. We feel that since we're not impacting the drainage any light, we feel that the need for that information is required. The next waiver, although we can show the location of all of them, the next waiver is the railway easiness, the restrictions, covenants, or any other lands we dedicate to the municipality. There are no restrictions, there are no covenants, there are no deep restrictions, and there is no need for any type of broad lay dedication along Galping Hill Road. The utility lines, again, that's going to be an existing situation. Nothing is going to change. No additional utilities are required for the post-operations of the site. So there is availability, there's water, there's gas and electric services in the existing building and will service the proposed improvements to the site. So that is a waiver we're asking for. Sanitary sewer. When the original building was designed, the sanitary sewer flow was determined by the square footage of the floor areas. Again, there is an increase in floor area for the area that's proposed in the back. That is going to be an examination type of facility that's going to be used by people that are occupying or going to the medical offices in the building. So it's not as if we're generating extra space that's going to require additional occupants that are not going to be part of the general building footprint. So the amount of people that will be using that new addition of this ground floors, uprise extension, or the basement are part of the overall system in the main building. So as far as the sanitary sewer flow, it should not increase. It might even be reduced based on the square footage calculations. The water supply utilities, again, I addressed that, that's a waiver we're asking for, proposed and existing counters. No proposed changes in grade are required, so that condition is the waiver we're asking for. I do have spot grades throughout the site. I didn't see any need to show the contours on the pavement other than spot grades, and we did have a number of spot grades here that indicated drainage flow, but the contours, I felt, might just add to the, you know, busyness of the plan. I think what we're more concerned about is the parking direction of flow and the proposed improvements. So a landscaping, we do have a landscaping plan on sheet four, so I'd say that's probably not, we aren't providing landscaping, but the lighting is probably what's part of that requirement or waiver that we're asking for. Landscaping, as you can see, we are providing additional landscaping along the front of the site, and upkeeping all of the other green areas, which are the traffic islands in the area to the rear of the site, will be all grass. Whatever is there now will be maintained and improved, and additional landscaping is placed in the front. Lighting, we showed locations of all the existing light poles throughout the site. There are some that are not functioning at this point, but the applicant is going to correct that situation, and it's the existing condition, and we feel that is adequate for the site as it stands, the way it is. Without the, ask for a waiver for a site lighting diagram, but certainly there are lights currently there and will be repaired, whichever ones aren't working. So those would be the waivers that we're looking for.
Okay. I'm just getting back to the square footage of what's there. I note that Mr. O'Brien talks about a 95,845 square foot building. This includes the parking garage underneath.
Yes.
Okay. So when we subtract out that, we have actual rentable square foot. Do you have that number?
The part of the actual square foot.
The actual, yeah.
I believe that's a number for your perspective.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Deck?
Can you just explain 24 again, the waiver? Because you said that the proposed sanitary sewer system wasn't going to be impacted even though you're putting up an official building in the back? I didn't really understand how that...
Sure.
Well, there you go.
Well, first of all, the initial site was more than likely designed based on office use, and that's, I believe, quite 125 gallons per day in per square foot.
Okay.
So my contention is that this is not all office use, it's mostly metal. The intensity of that use is less than office use.
Okay. All right, okay. I, I can understand that, but I just didn't understand how you were adding a building and not have any impact.
But to address that point, because we are expanding the building's square footage with that new addition plus foots in the back, those areas are not really expansion of the services that for a combination of new clients or additional people. It's there to service the uses that are in the main building. It's more mechanical, x-ray features that will be conveying people that are in the main building. They would go there, be diagnosed, start whatever treatments are needed, they would come back to the main building.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else on the board have questions for Mr. Deck?
I'm going to ask, and I might be the, Mr. Jones, excuse me, I'm going to ask to some, maybe, should be the right person. We've just been given this list of all these uses in this building, these different uses. We're just trying to understand how flows, how many cars, how the process works, that this all kind of works together. That's one. And again, if you just take a few, explain how we get to this number that we get to and all that stuff.
Okay. Dr. Patel, during his testimony, one of the things that was suggested when I spoke to O'Brien, we're going to give you a day-to-day what happens in this building. And if we could waste for Dr. Patel...
Sure. I thought, I thought it was...
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. You're adding a structure on your patio of the building, and you're adding rentable space in the garage.
Yes.
Okay. Are you infilling and adding anything to the main portion of the building?
Infilling as far as you are changing probably the interior layout, but there's no...
No, there's some two-story height spaces in the building currently.
There are some what?
Two-story height spaces in the building. Between the ground floor and the second floor, there's a two-story height space, and between the third floor and the fourth floor is a two-story height space.
Is that like the main entrance or atrium area that...
Are you infilling that?
That's a good question for your perspective.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. O'Brien, Mr....
No questions here, thank you. Just a couple of questions. For some of the waivers that you're requesting, you're proposing of an initial building in the back and requesting waivers for any of the existing utilities, but shouldn't you be showing how this new building connects to the, any of the existing facilities that are going out to Galping Hill Road?
Right. There's no external connection to those new buildings with the utilities that will all be through the adjoining building, so the architect can be in touch.
Okay. The other question is, you mentioned you also have a waiver for the lighting. I'm sure right now, there's some existing lighting on the back of the building that provides lighting onto the rear parking lot. With the addition of a building there, which could essentially block some of those existing lighting, I think that lighting plan should be submitted to show that the sites include lights.
Right. This area here, I believe that you're addressing is the area that's flat or even similar, close to the ground, not renovation. This is the four-story portion of the building. Whatever light is being projected towards its rear parking area probably is not as impacted as the lights that are existing on the rear parking area. On this adjoining building, there will be architectural lighting coming off the building towards the rear. So the new building will have lighting.
I would still recommend to the board, yeah, a lighting plan being submitted as part of this application.
Okay. Anyone else?
One other thing, in reference to utilities, when the, one medical use that's there right now... When the, one medical use that's there right now came into that building, they ended up adding the generator system out back by the dumpster. So when these multiple medical facilities come in, are we expecting, and I apologize if I overlooked it, where are those generator systems going?
As far as new generator systems would be a question that we introduce either by the applicant or the architect. But the existing ones, as you mentioned, are.
And you don't have any, you don't have any other new ones proposed?
Not on my plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Robert Stone, please, card tip. Could you raise your right hand, please? Thank you. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is of your truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spire last name?
Robert Zaccione, Z-A-C-C-O-N-E.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, we give you qualifications to appear as a licensed architect.
I'm licensed in New Jersey, New York, Georgia. And my education includes an architecture degree from Pratt Institute and a Masters of Science in Health Facilities Design from Columbia University.
Testify before the board, please.
Yes, I have, in the past, yes.
Everyone good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Stone, you were retained by Dr. Patel to design proposed expansions in this building?
Yes, I have.
Could you please?
It should be marked A1. I believe that's the first exhibit.
Yes. These exhibits represent enlargements of the plans already submitted to the board, so you should have.
Are they colored though?
They're colored.
Yeah. They are colored?
Yes.
They are colored.
If that's the exact.
I ordered A1, A1.
131?
Yes.
Why don't we mark that A1? It is a different size. Just to clarify. It should be A1.
Yeah, it's not exactly the same. Well, there's no big.
And this is called colorized.
This is the basement level.
Okay.
Represents existing basement, existing building, and proposed. In this plan, I've added additional information for clarification indicating that the existing building has one entry at the garage level existing. And with our proposed addition, we're also going to be providing another entry at the lower level.
Is this what you're doing?
I'm sorry, this has actually been revised from what the board had received previously.
Yes. No, the only revision is the indication of the entrances. The plan.
Which means it's revised.
Yes.
It's different from what this would be. This is different from what the board had.
Yes.
Is there my clearance?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So I think basement. It indicates that we have two, we have one existing entry and we have a proposed entry at the lower garage level.
And at the garage level, we are proposing to build out some space, correct?
That's correct. At the lower level, we're literally proposing some, certainly the addition of a proposed radiology suite that we have.
That square footage is?
Possibly 2,000 square feet with a radiology and MRI, x-ray right across the way of not only 1,500, 1,600 square feet, as is indicated.
Where's the entry for the x-ray, MRI, x-ray?
It's going to be opposite the entrance.
I just didn't see the elevator, okay.
Can you clarify the trailer that's shown on the crossroad?
Yes, as previously testified, this is a pet CT trailer that will be there in place only on weekends.
In, on the garage level?
On the garage level, but on the exterior. And the reason is that there is a need occasionally for patients in here to use the side entrance that's already there in order to use whatever facilities the MRI radiology has to offer. So there may be some cross-traffic, toilets, et cetera.
Can you explain what a radiology suite is? Because I think that's where they do the treatments, right?
They do the treatments and MRI.
The trails where you do the testing, right?
That's correct.
Dr. Patel, I'm trying to get into this. Mr. O'Brien had talked about our jargon, so I created, we created this little medical jargon label thing. Everybody understands it as a label, and I don't know what these things are.
This is gonna have to be marked A2. Medical jargon labels.
Thank you.
That's A2.
Yeah, A2?
Yes. Medical jargon labels.
We've gone around these types of terms at least. We understand what the abbreviations stand for. And Dr. Patel will be available to tell you, perhaps if your questions are more detailed, what they actually.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry. We're now looking at the original drawing A2, which I guess, since we've answered making the mother and the difference of the revision, this plan, color plan, represents the first one.
That should be A3.
So this is A3.
A3, and that's the first floor?
Why is it A3?
Well, A2 is a little.
All right, all right, all right.
It's different than A3. A3 is A2.
And this is the first floor.
What's the revision date on that?
Well, the date indicated here is January 31st. It's the same date as what's on the, you're just telling.
He changed that one.
He unchanged, I mean, he identified.
I changed it second on to.
You put those on top, those are like stickers, right?
Those are stickers.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Magic markers.
Highlighting. But it still needs to be treated differently, but okay. Continue, I'm sorry.
And this is the first floor plan, this is our grade plan. And it indicates that we have existing entries. One and two is also an entry at the rear, we call that existing entry three, the rear. And as we continue further onto the grade property, we have proposed entry number one serving the radiology suite at that grade level. That's on a proposed addition. That's clear to the board.
That's first floor?
This is first, yeah.
So that's a, I'm walking into the street literally, right? Those are the existing entries? Okay, I'm sure, continue, thank you.
These coincidentally are underneath the overhead.
Yeah, oh, perfect, okay.
There was a question about the lobbies, the two-story atrium, I think. We're not adding any space in there.
No, all of the space of that, you indicate are common areas, stairs, elevators, toilets, and that atrium, that's two stories. So that's not part of the square footage calculation. I'm now looking at A3, which I guess is now a, number four.
A4. Do you make any changes?
Yeah, nothing changed.
Did you make any changes to that?
Nothing's changed on A4.
Well, let's keep it going.
Yeah, it's still. Nothing has changed on A4, this is another. And I haven't.
What were you talking about?
Do you want to go back to A, I'm assuming that's the second floor?
This is our second floor floor, that's correct. No revisions to.
That's what we want you to.
That's what explains.
First floor, yeah.
Well, we have, the tan area shaded is representing the dialysis people's area. And the green area represents our proposed daycare center.
Adult?
Adult.
Adult, please, adults.
The white represents common areas.
How are the entries? How do we get into it? Just elevator?
Elevator and stairs existing.
What's the hallway?
This hallway is the proposed elevator dedicated for dialysis and radiology.
Okay.
Dedicated. Patient privacy.
Is there any new space being added on second floor?
No.
Some of these that go two floors, is that, are these the ones that go two floors? Like, is there another, there's another floor we don't care about this, right?
There was another called Grand Development, daycare center of office. Which I guess you're referring to that.
Yeah.
The floor on the next page is third floor?
It's A5, it's the third floor.
Again, there's no change in this diagram that the board knows how to read.
Just walk through the details.
And again, we are looking at, Dr. Patel is going to be addressing the ambulatory care surgical center proposed in this particular area. And we have a proposed adult daycare center in this area here. This happens to be already approved by Department of Community Affairs.
Any new space being added on third floor?
What's that green there?
Green is proposed rehab doctor's offices. I think that's going to be something that perhaps some related physicians may be able to rent out and supplement services.
Okay.
This is the penthouse.
Oh, and mark that A6.
Dr. Patel, you talked about the proposed federal government offices here. And we've already testified that the child daycare center will be eliminated.
Okay, great.
Why will it be rejected?
I cannot address that, no plans are.
It's gonna be just a fee use. We factored in, you know, here, parking for a fee use. We don't have a proposal.
I don't want to confuse the board, but this is an A1 that was originally submitted to the state. And it represents a lot of technical spaces that are required by DCA. And I simply show that to say that, to repeat again, entry location, existing building, new building. And this was submitted to DCA already, as well as DOH. DOH approves it first, and then forget those with DCA.
Those arrows that represent anything?
Those arrows represent the direction of entrances, entry location.
No, I meant the other arrows be the one, it makes it look like it's like.
Yeah, that's right. That plan's been changed.
Those were originally directions of traffic, but I think our traffic consultant could modify or change as necessary, as recommended.
Is that entry in the front of the building?
By front, you mean here?
Yes.
No.
No. Well, we have that, we have, and without the stickers on.
Well, if that's stickers, then we need to get it later.
Is that what?
That'll be, oh, that should be A7 then. And this is, what can we call this? Something with stickers.
Let's call this architectural technical site plan.
Okay.
Listen to that.
Can I add one second?
It could be A7.
Yes. Are all the entrances going to be ADA accessible?
They are virtually the same at this time, and that's what we require, of course. Ramps, doors.
Okay, so the ramps right now on the parkway side of the building, where you're showing handicapped spaces.
Yeah, there are very minor turncuffs that get us into the first floor, that exist.
Is it your intention that the owners not going to do anything to those? That they're going to remain as they are today?
I have no plans, and then if you want to testify, whether you want to upgrade and then change. Obviously.
I would suggest to you that they don't meet the code today.
They what?
They do not meet the code today.
And certainly, this entrance we have is directly accessibly. There is a line or ramp at this point, and then perhaps you're referring.
At both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's got to be taken care of.
Are the doors going to be replaced?
We had talked about that, and I, and we all know that they need to be replaced.
Are they going to be replaced? It's good to know that.
I believe they are, and Dr. Patel contested that.
Same, same thing with this, with the stickers?
Same thing with the stickers. This is the technical drawing A2. And this was a document that was submitted and approved by DCA. And I show it this week.
If we don't have that, yeah, let's mark that A8. And this is.
This is radiology suite at garage level. And this is the radiology suite at closet.
Can I ask a question? Just so that the board may or may not understand. Just because it's DCA approved, that has no bearing on the approval of this board to this project. That means it meets code, but it has nothing to do with use and why you're here?
I believe, you know, different, you know, agencies, community authorities, yes, it doesn't.
It meets code? Yes, okay.
I say that only because a lot of what DCA approves is really wanting to change.
We would always understand that every project that this board approves is going to meet the code. That's usually a condition of our approval.
And I like a design facility too, I mean.
Yes, and so, but several board members and public may not understand that just because you're saying it's DCA approved does not preempt our ability to deny and/or approve based upon our.
Yeah, and just for emphasis, DCA is involved with the inside of the structure. And certainly, this board is restricted beyond that inside and exterior, yes.
Can I suggest that when you're done with your presentation, or whenever we're done with this, that anything that you had approved already should be submitted to us as reference plans? Because we don't have this plan.
We can provide whatever the board wishes.
I mean, just kind of confusing that you're displaying it and you're identifying, you're explaining it, which is good, but it's just, that's all it is, the presentation. We don't have it in front of us at all.
We do have the base plan, but not the plan as revised.
No, we don't have A2.
We have A1.
We have A1 three times, we have A8. We have A1 to A5 in large-size architectural without the DCA. And we have A5 twice, DCA, and we have A6. So we have A5 DCA, but that's it. We don't have any other DCA.
We don't have that A2.
We have A2, which is the first floor, it is the third floor.
Somebody show me that. This is A2 that I told. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Touch that.
But that's not. A2.
Right. It's just.
Now, in the very beginning, I don't know if it's a plan or not, the applicant was submitting to the board the DCA approved plans, which was 30-plus pages or something like that. And I suggested to the applicant that that's not gonna help you because you don't want to know the plumbing and the lighting inside and all that other stuff. We want to see now, whatever this affects the site, whatever this stuff affects the site. So plan to revise and colorize where that's submitted. So now, here's some of the DCA plan now coming back.
And if it's confusing the board, my apologies, maybe it should not have been submitted. Or that be spread freely.
Okay.
Let me turn to perhaps some, simply indicates, adult daycare, this simply indicates dialysis. And this is dialysis.
No, but those are. Those are greater details. Those are details, we're showing the stations and things like that, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And this, I think, the board has this, these elevations, partial elevations of what the expansion is.
We have that, yeah.
And this is architectural drawing A5. What happened?
That's the DCA.
Eight-nine?
Yeah, why don't we just, let's keep it consistent.
Colorize version.
A9. And this is a, what can we call this? Colorized.
Color. Randomly of. Elevation.
This is proposed radiology suite elevations. Colorized. Is that crayons?
You okay, Alan?
You're a very good.
Dangerous guy, you gotta be combat.
Combat, I'm a bit more. Suffering from PTSD.
You okay?
I do a wrong drawer. We got it, we're looking at my neck.
You can work. Yeah, we can hold the board when you break it.
Hold on, this board. And our proposal diagram is this, this area of the building is a story above the existing plaza level. Here, that's the existing building, this position. This is what it looks like from north elevation. The addition is this way, and of course, the building existing is beyond it. And this is from our west elevation. This is the one-story addition to the existing plaza level. Mr. Zuccotti, there were some questions about lighting? Yes, there are. In photographs, I think, the board members have, there is existing building lighting right on this facade here. That the intent obviously is to improve that, but that does light a great part of that rear parking lot area. And it's mounted on the building. This is where positioned, on where the trail around weekend will be positioned, and that's the door that the trailer will be using so that patients and staff can go back and forth as needed.
So you said it will be used on weekends, on weekdays, it will be carted out of there?
That's my understanding, yes. And Dr. Patel can certainly testify to that.
Okay.
This is a track trailer type situation?
Dr. Patel will be able to give greater detail.
Because the way it's illustrated on the drawings...
It looks like a station area.
It's, it's going to go from an area that is level to an area that is inclined, the way it's drawn. So if this is, patients are supposed to be in it, it would appear that...
We will certainly make it... Going to be lean reclined, and will be relatively level. There was parking there now, in those spaces.
Yes, there's parking back there, but the way they're showing it across an island, they go from the flat area at the north side of the building to the west side of the building, which is now inclining back up to the grade at the boulevard, so...
We will make that right.
In doing so, you'll be blocking the garage?
No, because we need the garage for vehicular access, so it will be on the side of the garage. And it will be related to that side door, likely in this area.
Not by your drawings right now, but go ahead, let's continue. But is it, how wide is it? How long is it?
Well, I would think that it's relatively as wide as parking lanes and...
Right, but I'm saying, you think maybe over enough that it wouldn't block the garage door, in theory?
Yes.
Quite easily.
Yeah, and frankly, if this part of the grade has to be adjusted, and it will accommodate that, that will obviously have to be...
Yeah, I'm not sure what it, if it's on wheels, or if it, maybe it's like cinder blocks.
We have two more witnesses who are more knowledgeable than the architects. And we can defer to that? If you are going to be doing anything with the grade, would constitute having to carve, to revise plans?
It would be premature to say that. I know how the grade is going to be resolved, but obviously, it's got to be accessible. And obviously, it's got to accommodate the trailer without blocking the garage doors, obviously.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Mr. O'Brien's clear.
There's some point about, sorry.
No, a lot. Our engineer brought up a good point. The drawing, one of the A1 drawings, that's the A1 drawing, that's the, A1 drawing, that's the site plan, shows modified concrete islands so that this trailer could park there. Both of those modified concrete islands have different heights on both sides of those concrete islands. One of them is because it's tipping down into the parking, the underneath parking, because there's a high spot, and then it slopes down into the garage. As does the garage for pretty much the whole way that you're, the area where you're building inside the garage. Most of that area until about three columns into that building is sloping from the north to the south. So, and right now, your exterior grade is sloping towards that garage door. You're removing a concrete island that is there, making it, separating those two levels right there by the door. And then you are doing it also at the same spot, closer toward the parkway, for facilitating the allowance of this trailer there. Which then comes into play, is the drive over area now safe and properly sloped? Because these islands were put there so that you went around it and the slopes could be achieved. To take away the islands, you're going to remove the ability to have the slope achieved properly. The engineer will probably want to comment about that.
I think the finer detail and the elevations required to accommodate the trail as well as access need to be still worked out. What is the elevation of the trailer with the wheels attached to it? That has to be...
If I could ask the engineer to comment on this question? Yeah, I think the engineer opinion for the...
Sure. Well, I'm here, as the board members pointed out, the area where the garage door, the just sloped down to go to the garage lot. The grade from the eastern corner of this parking area where the trailer is proposed to be positioned to here has about maybe a foot in change of grades. That's relatively flat over about 60 feet of distance. There is that wing wall that, that where, now, if, if the height of the bombing trailer interferes with that wing wall, then the option is to push the trailer further back. Since this is on a weekend, these, these spots will not be used, majority of the building is not going to be used. However, I believe that depending on how that trailer is constructed and how high the ground floor, the bottom, it may be able to span over the curb line where the front, or one part of the trailer will be here, and the other end will be over here, and span that area that's going down into the garage.
Mr. Deck, where you, where you positioned that trailer from that point to that point, yes, is relatively...
Is this flat?
Flat. But the drawings are showing that trailer going past that island to the area where...
It's going all the way across.
Okay. You're passing the edge of the building, that's where it starts going up.
I'm going from this point, parking lot, to possibly back there.
Okay. The drawing I have in my hand, the drawing that was submitted, the trail is past that point.
Of the architectural plan?
Yes.
Yes.
That's probably just a reference of nature or a figure. It's not, we have over 60 feet.
Do we have a truck movement access plan then for this site? For this positioning of this tractor trailer?
The tractor trailer, it will have to do a series of kick turns and position the trailer in that area.
Are you driving over the concrete, the concrete island?
That one there, I don't think so. I'm not even sure how high that is now that you have got that subject, whether or not the bottom of the trailer being included there. That's something we'd have to look at. If that is in conflict, we would have to position the trailer away from that area.
Now you're inhibiting emergency vehicles from making a, a going around that building.
No, not necessarily.
If you pull that tractor trailer down there, you will.
It could be positioned what's now the parkway on a normal day.
Unless you go all the way up against the cemetery.
Go by, I can, if I, if I, if I like to address this, we'd find out the exact length of the trailer.
Mr. Deck, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I don't...
Yeah, go ahead.
Now we're talking about tractor trailer, now we're talking like a, like a box. Is this thing got wheels, or is it adjustable? If it's not level, can it, can it just be adjusted?
Yeah.
On site, they say, well, this is, there's an angle here, let's straighten it out and make it level?
Well, that's exactly my thought, only because it's a million dollar, I mean, piece of equipment.
I mean, I'm sure someone's thought about this before.
I think, I think there's excellent questions, but I have people that, why don't we swear in if the people have some knowledge? And as the questions come, the person who has the knowledge can chime in, so...
Well, just one more, one comment to that, is that he may know exactly what the trailer looks like and have what it has. He's not going to know about whether it's going to be level on the ground, you know?
Well, I'm not on the ground. But the question, how long is it? This gentleman doesn't know, Mr. Kukalas does know. So I thought it'd be best if he gets sworn in. So when the question comes, how long it is, and this gentleman can't answer it, we have somebody again.
Okay. Before you get rid of Mr. Deck...
The pictures at the back of the building are in my photo report, page four.
Before, before Ed, wait. Maybe, in view of what's been asked so far, and we're spending a lot of time on this trailer, we need turning templates. Yeah, insert, whatever. And if you have to provide because, and it sounds like yourself too, whether that trailer's going to be in the back, or it's out there, whether it's going to be next to the building, doesn't make a difference. However many scenarios, that's how many scenarios of turning templates you should do. You could probably put, you know, just chop out that piece, put a couple scenarios.
I understand.
You know? Because it's really not clear. And, and if you're going to leave it in, if you're going to, and we're going to hear from Mr. Dr. Patel, but I mean, if we're, if you're going to leave it into the judgment of the driver of the trailer, of the million dollar equipment, then who knows if it's going to really be done in the way that you and everybody else is indicating and testifying to it? I mean, that's really...
It's a million dollar piece of medical equipment.
Just saying, I understand very clearly what it is that you're suggesting, and we'll have that shown on the plan. The question though, as far as that wing for that, we walk, looking at the pictures of the planner has prepared, and from, I guess it's four, top and the bottom, top shows the left side, the bottom picture shows the right side. You can see that the two parts are all pretty flat. So once the trailer is positioned, it certainly can span that small curve type of aisle. It certainly will be underneath it. How it's placed there, that'll be something Mr. Patel will do.
Any other questions from the board?
For Mr. Zuccotti, tires, we do need some tire needs to, plans, numbers, dates, et cetera.
What was the question, Kevin?
My, my suggestion was that the, Mr. Zuccotti's architectural plans need to be numbered in such a way that they can be differentiated, they need to be dated in a way that they can be differentiated. We have revised plans in front of us that I don't presume you brought copies this evening of those.
No, not of the ones that were revised. So what, if, if the, except that in order to do is dated, and then it'll be submitted accordingly.
Okay. My suggestion, they've got to be straightened out, is I suggest...
One last thing for the architect. The existing building has a number of exhaust fans in the basement level, because it's a parking garage. It appears that the additions that you're going in, in the basement, are conflicting with those. So how's the exhausting of the garage going to be handled?
Obviously, it's to be modified. And we didn't take these studies off, so we couldn't get any aspects of the garage. But of course, the garage is, it's got to be exhausted. Regroup.
Just don't see any space left.
Mr. Deck stated that all the utilities, all the proposed utilities for the proposed building are going to connect to the existing building?
I cannot test part of that at this time. I think engineering on that has to be further studied. These are schematics, and to the extent that MEP was addressed, we have to see what, how that should solve in terms of tapping off the existing services or providing new upgraded electrical, et cetera. And I'm sorry.
So in theory, the building couldn't require more additional, like separate utilities going into it?
Or separate for the addition, proposed addition.
Bathroom's in the addition, or is it just a...
There are, there are plumbing, well, plumbing. We have the availability of a loop in case we need an addition, incandiers, or a handle or anything, et cetera.
Who are we supposed to ask about the generator?
Either the existing generator, that's there serving the surgery suite first of all, it's got to be enlarged or moved.
That's theirs. That's, that's not the building's, that's theirs.
That's theirs. And with an arrangement, perhaps, Dr. Patel could work out an alignment or a secondary one nearby on that island.
It's a lot of ifs, then. If you're putting new HVAC units, how's the building going to look? Are we going to have, welcome to Ketterworth, here's 20 tons of air conditioning as you're coming down the parkway? If we're talking about new units on the roof or something that you just mentioned.
We'll have to certainly find out what MEP's solutions are to that and address the board accordingly, yes.
Are there units on the roof now?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're awesome, yes. In fact, they were recently repaired.
Yeah, and you could see on page four, when they don't get addressed, that's what happens.
What do you refer to that?
The stack that's on page four, the picture in the back of the building. When the medical facility went in, and it wasn't addressed, where their units that got installed in the ceiling of the basement were getting exhausted, because nobody brought that up. When it came time to it, all of a sudden, this thing...
You know why that happened? Because they modified and added additional OR, the existing capacity wasn't large enough. And anticipating the expansion, we had to provide that. So it's not as if no one thought of it. It's because of the modification of the surgery suite inside, adding another OR, and the anticipation of the expansion, we had to do that solution.
But architecturally, doesn't really play well with the building.
It's a matter of...
And it sat there naked as raw, galvanized ductwork for many years, until it finally got covered.
Many years?
Yes. I worked in the building for 15 years, I do know what it looked like before.
There was, there was a pre-existing chimney, I'll call it, using as exhaust. Once the ORs were modified, that chimney was taken down, and in its place, this larger unit, an intake had to be provided because of the requirement for distance of intake from...
Can the point is just so that the board, you get a fair sense of what's going to get put there, we need to ask those questions, that's what the point is. Thank you.
Does the board have any additional questions? Do the professionals have any additional questions?
All right, this time, sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next witness.
Harshad Patel. Like in third grade, we have handouts.
I'm assuming this is an enlarged list of the smaller one that you provided us with?
Yes.
Right. No, we're going to mark that A10, and I guess we can call it uses?
This is a revised, based on taking the daycare out, the child daycare out.
All right, so the one we have now can be tossed.
Correct. Where's A10?
A10.
Can we identify the author and the date of this?
Yeah, we'll have to.
The author, I believe, is Lee Klein, our parking expert. And he put it together, the doctor Harshad Patel, on when, February?
Yeah, it's kind of right, Monday.
Monday. Monday was the 11th of February. Monday was the 11th of February.
All right, so we'll get, we'll get to him, we'll get to Mr. Klein.
Ah, he didn't get one.
And the bottom's cut off.
Yeah, bottom's removed.
And the right side.
They made copies.
Well, the old one had notes on the bottom too.
No excess surplus supply. Okay, your last column. Okay.
Why don't we, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give show me the truth?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell probably both your first and last name?
Harshad Patel, H-A-R-S-H-A-D, last name Patel, B-A-D-G-H.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Patel, you are the manager of this property? Yes, sir. And the uses that are proposed, under proposed uses, could you go through them in terms of identifying either as a tenant or something that is under your control? Okay, there are totally nine uses over here. The first one is the radiology, and IMRT, MRI, and PET CT scan. They're all in a one use, combined, because we control by us. The number two use, which is the NDA, which is the modest of the endoscopy, they have a current endoscopy suite, and then a radio office on the first floor, that are canon. The third one, which is.
I'm sorry. So those of us who don't understand what an IMRT, which is a intensive modulated radiation therapy, and MRI, could you please explain that? We haven't, though, we haven't.
Yeah, we got, we got.
We have, it's right.
Just in layman's terms, please.
MRI, which is a magnetic resonance imaging, and it's when the person has injured and you could be able to identify the soft tissue injury. If you have an accident, you could find the, any broken bones or so forth, that's what you could get in an accident. But the MRI, you could get a soft tissue injury. The CAT scan, which is a computerized tomography, and that can detect the cancers to the patient, and that was the basically use of it. Same with the PET CT, it's a PET scan is a specific, let's say if you have a lung has a cancer, and they give you the exact specific location of the lung where the nodule is. So patient can be treated at the bottom, where it says the IMRT, where you needed a specific area to give a chemotherapy, radiation therapy, and that's radiation therapy will be done. And because it's all three medical facility are intercore related, and the reason for the PET CT, it can give you the superimposed imates for the, both the PET scan as well as the CAT scan. So exact specific location will be identified under that instrument. And then the patient will go for the chemotherapy, especially the IMRT, which is the radiation therapy. And the radiation therapy will be done on that particular nodule, so that will be a particular, at a hundred percent identified position, that's the proper location. That was the reason all the three are combined together. Since you're detailing all this, what's the purpose of that trailer? A trailer is a, it's a, it's a big piece of the equipment, it's about three and a half million dollar cost. And monthly maintenance, it runs about between $48,000 plus or minus a couple of thousand dollars. And that is a very expensive, and the people have to use that machine as a maximum advantage of the use. And that was the reason we proposed over here only for Saturday and Sunday. The other time, we take it to the other location where we do have other location, and that's where the machines go, and that can be tested over there too. And each one is a very specific, the patients are also timely scheduled, PET scan has a dose, a specific dose has to be delivered before the two hours of the patient available to your patient coming. Let's say patient is scheduled eight o'clock, the dose will be delivered just before the two hours. Cannot be before the two hours, otherwise the dose will be delayed and half-life of that dose will die. So you could not get accurate reading of the particular patients. So it's the trailer? I'm sorry. What, how it is a trailer? A trailer is about, every quite about eight foot, and then it's about forty feet of the length in a, that's the way the standard trailer works. These trailers are manufactured by General GD, which is the large company, and that's what they do.
That doesn't include the actual truck park?
Truck park, which is the, the person will drop off the trailer, and the truck park, which is goes away, they don't need to stay.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm fine.
Is, is it adjustable? We were talking about the plane and slope of things.
I think it is.
It needs to be level, I mean, if you're doing a precise test or something.
Yeah, it's a precise testing, and before the testing will go, there is always a leveling mechanism, because the machine has to be in a plane level before they start and do the testing of the patient. And that, generally, when the guys deliver, they do it night time, and they do the leveling in the morning, when the technician come and check it out, and they'll do the adjustment of the, if any level of the picture drew up or down, that's the technician job.
Dr. Patel, you said that you have this machine ready, this trailer, and you use it on the other sites, right?
This will be projected to be used on the other side. I do not have currently in my possession.
You have access to go look at it, right?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So maybe when Mr. Deck provides the turning movement radius, the turning movement templates on the plan to show us how you're going to get this trailer in and out of it and put it in position, maybe you could also provide some photos of it on site somewhere else, just for us to have an idea of. Because at that, at that point, we could surmise what it's going to look like after you take the tracker away.
I'll be happy to get you the certain judgment, they're sort of located on the sites and so forth, and that way you could see how tight they are. And what's the, what's the trailer when they lock in? They put some cones over there, and that cones, it's not a plastic cone, it's a special cone, so nobody can bump it, because it's a three and a half million dollar material, and that need to be do the production on that next day.
You got, you got to understand, on our part, you know, we're, we're given X amount of documents, whether they're updated, whether they're not updated or not. And everything else that's introduced as exhibits or extra support, we can't see it, it's kind of hard to judge on it. So that's why, you know, we're kind of.
Not a problem, I will be happy to provide the pictures, not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think you were going through the uses in terms of what is under your control and what is a tenant.
Okay, this is the pharmacy, which is also in our control, that is pharmacy, does not have people coming from outside, this is for the inside, the people, they could realize the service. The dialysis is also in our control, which is on a fourth, it's on a second floor, and then there's the adult daycare center, also going to be on a second floor, that's also in the control of us. The ASC and the medical office.
What's ASC, St.
ASC is the ambulatory care surgery centers, you know, that's where it's the ASC stand for. And here you can see the ASC over here, for the endoscopy. So this ASC and rehab office, medical office, which is, my son's going to be running the office, and he's the one who's going to do the operations, you know. My son is a specialized in pain management, and my daughter-in-law, she's also the PMNR and specialized in pain. So that's what they do. The adult daycare center, it's again, it's approved programs and so forth, and that will be controlled by us. And the GSA, which is the number eight, we have not yet formally signed by these, GOV, which is the government office, yet, so until that, I cannot disclose who's the tenant is, because it's a classified information. I hope you expect that.
But you do state that there's 28 employees.
Well, 38 based on a square feet, I did not, just hypothesis is to put down the numbers as a 28 employee, I put as a number.
And without, we have, who that is.
Yeah, I'm not going to, you know.
Asking you to, but will this office have members of the public visiting it?
I don't think so, under my knowledge, which I have interaction with the government officers.
Because that will have an effect upon the parking.
I don't think so, you know, they don't, they have their internal office, you know, and that's what we put it down, and they are also, they need to take the, any of the tandem parking's phones, that was the agreement we took.
So you're dedicating that to the tandem parking?
Correct.
And there's only, in this particular case, there's tandem meaning one car behind another car?
Yes, sir.
In no places, there are three cars?
There is not a single one, it's in the site at all, there's a three stack every car, which I never see in my life.
Okay, got it. And this space that you label government, that government is, in their lease, it says they have to use the tandem.
Exactly, there will be a label for the government office also, this is dedicated for the GSA number one, two, three, four, five.
And so it's been represented to you, the government, they have like a nine to five schedule, they come to nine, they leave at five.
Monday to Friday, they will be gone.
And I think if you have a column there for all the hours that all these different uses are going to occupy.
Correct. And over here on a specific column for the trailers, which is the, it will be drop off on a Friday after eight PM, so nobody will be around, and it will be picked up the first Sunday, at six o'clock, you know, and then will go on the other side Sunday at nine to the different location. So the Monday, they could be able to operate over there.
And under employees.
I'm sorry.
That's a couple of. Yeah, the regular columns.
Well, I believe it's a, you know, a black and white, it also has a more similar number.
Probably same as the old one.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the old one.
I can bring you one.
Your general office.
Okay, sorry, you can't see.
So you're proposing two twenty-five, and?
Lee Klein said that the purpose, the purpose of this exhibit for this witness is to identify the uses, the amount of employees, physicians in this case, hours of operation. With regard to the parking, I would ask that you.
Wait, I'm not, it's not necessarily about parking, it's, it's, you list employees, physicians, I know it's been stated that a lot of these people will be dropped off or being locked off, but there's no anticipation for any type of visitors or any other than what's shown.
Well, Lee Klein, that's advice, you know. Because majority of the dialysis procedure, they're always scheduled to be picked up, because.
If we hear from Lee Klein tonight, he'll tell you that fifty places, fifty parking places are available for that person who may show up at the building.
Any patient, once they go for the dialysis, they become a sick. So after four hours, there will be always at least eight days of the patients, and they will be transported back to their home or so. Same way that adult daycare center people, they just don't drive, you know, they will be all transported, and there are so many of the nurses, that's the Jim Kokalas will be able to tell you. And the patients on the doctor's office, they are always scheduled, it takes one hour of the patients, you know, and after one hour, there's another one. And that's how they were only five, six hours.
Currently, how many, how many offices or how many offices do you have there now?
What do you mean?
Like have, I mean, you have not proposed uses.
What's the occupancy of the building now? It's probably, I think somebody had counted the other day, Lee had counted, I don't even remember the exact. What percentage of this building's occupied? Oh, what percentage of the building occupied is less than 15% of the building currently occupied. And when we have to go through the, I probably, excuse me, when we have to go through the approval process from the Department of Health, and DCA, it's not an overnight magic. It is not overnight magic, because if you needed to get an approval, you need to wait for three years. After three years, you have to go to the DCA, another two years. So building is empty, the reason because we have a specific use for it.
Did you say 15 or 15?
One point 15, less than 15%, sir.
I apologize if I missed it. The seventy, the seventy-five hundred, is that the?
Endoscopy people, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Actually, I've got a minute, how long you've been working, I've been hearing about this case for at least a year, maybe longer.
I'm sorry, how long?
How long has this been, have you been working on this?
Since 2010. By what I can tell, in the back in the 2009, ever since she took the building on October, when this, I believe it June or July something, when they signed the agreement, there was a first condition, they cannot rent without her permission. So that building has a specific plan, that's why they turned one after the other, and see they lost all these years.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir. And we wanted to help you out this way, because this will benefit all the seniors throughout the year and company. That's our goal.
Any other questions or any questions?
Do you run any other facilities like this?
Yes, sir, I do have facility. Even I, I have a facility in Addison, which is about 28, 32,000 square feet, and we do the same surgery center, we do the radiology center, we do the rehab centers, and we have other great and dangerous centers also for immobility. So my, now at this moment, I gave to my children, you know, my older son, he's a doctor, and his wife is a doctor, they're both running, and this one is specifically for my younger son, and he's also a doctor, he's doing the second year residency in St. Joseph. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
I'll put my glass.
Sure.
In reference to square feet, should be this gentleman, as far as uses, okay. So between the endoscopic and the government, which you're not sure, that's about 14,000 square feet, and there's about 19,000 square feet on the, not taken into the chart. So we have 30 something thousand square feet, that's not under your control and/or not defined?
At this moment, this last two, I do not have control as well as this 7500.
Okay, so that's even more, so it's closer, closer to just shy of 40,000 square feet, if not under your control.
You are only in a max, sir.
Okay, so it's the government of 7200, the general office is 5,012, and then the tenant.
7,000.
And there's, there's 95,000 square feet in the building?
Yeah, well, that's because they include the parking garage as the 31,000 square foot of whatever is underground parking. Right hand?
Okay.
Fair enough. Is the rental space, what I'm seeing, bottom of the third aisle, 76,960, is that the rental?
That is correct, that's what is going to be controlled.
If this is approved, that will be the total available rental, okay.
Yes, sir.
That is the available rental space?
Yes, sir. If approved by the board.
One last time, any more questions from the board on Dr. Patel? All right, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Sheriff. I just want to note that there's a discrepancy between Dr. Patel's chart and what I had in my report on pages 14, 15, and 16. And rather than take the time of the board to go through this item by item, because I come up with 15 uses, which was based upon the site plan, which is obviously, which has obviously been surpassed by the recent architectural plans. If we can just try to reconcile these, that would be very helpful.
I would be happy to explain to you.
Wait, wait, let him ask, let him ask his question. For instance, you're using on your list some things that straddle two floors, where it wasn't obvious from the end of the plan that there was a direct connection between them. So anyway, I'm just saying, rather than waste the board's time, we should work on this for.
Okay, yeah. I'll be happy to. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. James Kokalas?
Could you raise your right, oh, are you, okay. Is he one of your witnesses?
Yes, yes he is.
Okay, I didn't know if he had a question or, okay. With regard to this application, could you raise your right hand, please? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give show me the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name, spell your last name, please?
James Peter Kokalas, K-O-K-K-A-L-I-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Kokalas, you are, I need you to give your credentials to the board for testifying. Your, your expertise is in architect and as a planner, but it's specific to the medical use, correct?
Yes. I'm an architect and I'm a licensed architect.
Yes. I'm an architect and I'm a licensed architect in three or four states, New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, Florida. I'm also a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. My expertise is I worked for the Department of Health, the New Jersey State Department of Health, in which I was a staff architect. We reviewed plans for these types of facilities, surgery center, ambulatory, all ambulatory surgery, surgery centers, dialysis centers, physical therapy centers, daycare centers, as well as hospital uses. My role was, part of my role was to review the plans for, for compliance with the Department of Health's requirements. The Department of Health's requirements were the operating rooms have to be a certain size, the recovery base have to be a certain size, certain mechanical systems have to be put in place. Once we approved it, the plan, the plans, the architects would then come up with construction documents and send them to DCA. DCA would do, the Department of Community Affairs does the code review and code approval for the projects. The local building departments don't review the medical facilities. Once they get the okay from DCA, the plans are stamped, they're then file for permits at the local. Once the facility is built, part of my job was to go and inspect them to see that they met the requirements as they were approved by DCA, Department of Health. I also, and I also helped write some of the requirements and some of the statutes, as well as some of the physical requirements for the facilities.
So to the, Mr. Kukalis, you're an employee of the New Jersey Department?
No, I'm retired.
Okay, I take that.
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone good?
Uh huh. Okay, so.
Mr. Kukalis, what I'm asking you specifically with regard to this project, you're familiar with these types of uses, you're familiar with the type of patient that is drawn into this type of use and the parking requirements. Could you comment with regard to the parking needs of these types of specific uses that Dr. Patel is proposing?
Yes. I've been involved in this project since two thousand and nine, when Dr. Patel called me and I, I worked with Bob Ziccone on developing the plan for the dialysis unit, all right, because of my experience with it. Since then, I didn't have anything. Dr. Patel called me and spoke to me about this. What, what I can attest to tonight is no one in dialysis drives to a dialysis, or no one personally drives anybody to a dialysis unit that I'm aware of. My in-laws both were dialysis patients. They were picked up and delivered. It's part of the payment process that the federal government, because most of them are on either, you know, federal insurance programs, pay for that. They're picked up and they're dropped off. As Dr. Patel said, it's a four to five hour process. There's usually two shifts a day. It usually goes every other day for a patient, so it goes into a Saturday. Saturdays are usually lighter than weekdays. Adult daycare, which my wife says I'm not, I know.
Qualified.
This being, this being, you know, Valentine's Day, I'm not home, so, you know, she's probably making phone calls. They're, they're picked up by the bus and taken to those facilities. They stay for the day. They usually see a doctor on site. They get medical attention. They get meds and so on and so forth on the larger facilities. Some of them are from smaller to larger. Dr. Patel's vision is to bring the patient in and take care of the patient in one spot as much as he can. If the patient is ill, or like he said, his son will be seen with these doc, these patients as well. So again, to reiterate, dialysis patients and adult daycare patients are dropped off. They're not, there's no parking requirement for that. There's parking requirement for the staff. That's it.
Dr. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask you. How many people we talking about really initially for, let's just say the dialysis or for all these adult daycare? I mean, okay, you're dropping people off, but how many cars is that? How many, you know what I mean? Is this going to be this long queue of people like?
Uh, no, usually, usually they start at six o'clock in the morning with dialysis and they start bringing them in between six and nine because they can't take care of them.
Right, but you know what I'm saying, right? I mean, there's only some.
It's, it's a constant flow between six and nine o'clock in the morning, and then there's pick up and drop off. They're dropping off and picking up at the same time for the second shift.
I'm just saying, you think the site can handle all this?
The park, the, the.
So I was here.
The parking expert will talk about that.
Okay.
What time does that second shift start?
Second shift usually starts anywhere, well, depends on the patient. It interfaces. In other words, if you come in at six, you're leaving around eleven. If you come in at nine, so it overlaps. And it has to overlap because there's not enough staff to get people on the dialysis and take them off to the dialysis if they all come at one time.
So all of the times, six to nine start, most people are done between?
Eleven, twelve, two, three, you know, it goes on to like six, seven o'clock.
More people here?
Yes, yeah. It's a second, it's another shift.
Okay, so trying to do the time on you.
Yeah.
So the first shift is six to nine start, and then they're done between eleven and twelve, you say?
I'd say eleven and one, eleven and two. Depends on individual patient too. Some stand longer, depends on how long they, what's going on.
And then other people are picked up again between the second shift between nine and two?
Yeah, they start coming in, yeah, they start coming in around eleven, and then you start coming in slow. Then it'll override. Then one bus will show up, it's usually one or two in a vehicle.
And the day is usually over at what time?
About seven.
So these are multiple transports?
Yeah, they're usually vans, small, like a small ambulatory, like an ambulance van, but not a box. It's a van.
Not the high one?
No, not the high ones.
Not the high?
No, you see these regular vans that say medical transport on them, that's what they're doing.
How many vans are up there, do you think it would take to run this facility?
Um, off the top of my head, without roofs and downtime, I think six to eight maybe.
And do those vans, after they, for instance, when they start between six and nine and they drop off their patient, do they then wait for the next patient?
No, they leave.
Or they?
They go to wherever, they're, they're for hire, so they go back to wherever. I've never seen anybody park a van at a facility.
So do they do trip by trip?
Trip by trip, yeah, they're kind of picking up other people.
Employees who are there all?
No, 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 no. They're, that's a contracted service. Usually there's two or three different services for any people.
How many dialysis stations are?
I believe in this one, there's thirty-five, thirty-five?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty?
Forty. Yeah.
Now you're talking about dialysis treatment. What about the other treatments that are going on? Is the same process happening?
Which treatment are we talking about?
Well, use of the radiology suite? Is this only one type of patient?
No, radiology, the doctor can answer those. Each one of those is very specific.
Okay. Like when the adult, the adult daycare, so there's, there's multiple uses at the same time. So the load that you're talking about is purely?
Yes.
For dialysis?
Yes. The, the, adult daycares are usually brought in larger vans. They usually bring in five, six, eight, ten people at a time.
Do we know the capacity of the adult daycare?
That I don't know. I believe it's on, it's based, it's based on square footage.
Square footage.
Square footage, pocketed seat, load requirement.
And what?
You have a number of, a hundred and ninety-two people?
So they usually load once in the morning and then they get, or is it different?
Yeah. That's, they're there for the day. They have lunch and then they go out. Now one of the things that we're looking at and I believe we'll be talking about is that two sides of the building can be loaded and unloaded at the same time.
Did you just say there's forty dialysis stations?
Yes.
And yet there's only ten employees?
I don't know what the employee count is.
Wow, let's, let's.
It'd be between ten to fifteen, I would say.
If a nurse can operate, it's six to eight patients managed.
Okay.
So they're all the nurses, they are high-class job people. They're not like regular people, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand. You can understand the correlation, that's why.
That's why I was saying that they, they can't hook up everybody at one time, at one point. Usually they're taking up five, six, et cetera, at a time. And my experience has been, they've never had a hundred percent. There's always empty chairs going on. You know, people drop out for the awful reason of death. These people are very, very sick, you know?
That's all, it's all regulated by the state, right?
Yes.
Okay, with the state, okay.
Let me, I can go into that.
Yeah, please.
All right. What happens is the, once the facility is built, once the staff is hired, once the staff is trained, when they have the training for infection control and so on. I'm also have a partner and we, we, we do this, we get facilities up and running, do policies and procedures. They do evacuation drills. They have to do clinical reports and so on.
Sure.
The state will come, the first time there's an appointment, they'll come and they'll expect, and they'll either approve or say this is what you need to do to get approved. After that, the state can walk in at any time. They just walk in the door, here we are. They'll come with a team of six, probably four to six nurses, building people, like safety people, pharmacists, and infection control people. And with dialysis, they'll have people for the water treatment processing as well.
Okay. Cause I'm concerned about the quality, you know, you know.
It's highly, highly regulated. In New Jersey, it's the highest regulated state in the country.
Thank you so much.
That sounds better, right?
Yeah.
Let me tell you something.
Medical, that's what you want.
Yeah, that's what you want.
All right. Cause I've been, I've been to other places. I went to Delaware and looked at a facility and I ran out with my hair on fire. Trust me. All right.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Many of the dialysis people, people are ambulatory or not ambulatory?
Some are wheelbarrow. Most, most are.
And how about the daycare?
The daycare, I have to defer to that.
It's, sometimes people will have a stick with them or shot, you know, came with them or shot.
I've seen both.
Yeah. But they, they, nobody drive like them, just say, go to the shop, right? Because it's not a shop, right? Yeah.
Primarily adult daycare people are functioning. They're aware where they are, you know, they're playing cards, you know, having a, a day. They're not just sitting in a corner. It's not that.
So is the Department of Health or DCA have requirements on evacuation procedures?
Absolutely.
And how would they generally work?
You have to do, you have to do four, well, actually now it's coming down to the point where they're doing six to eight drills a year. You have to do an emergency evacuation drill quarterly. It has to be recorded. A record has to be cut, a written record has to be cut. But you also have to do what we, those are fire evacuation. Then we do a disaster drill. Now, disaster drill can be, if the lights went off, what do we do? Everybody leaves easily. The other part of disaster is the building's shaking and everybody's got to get out quickly. So those have to be done two to three times a year quarterly. And it's all recorded and it's all thinking. And when the inspectors come in, they look at it. And the other thing we do is we go around and I'll say to somebody very casually, what are you doing from the fire? I have a nurse sometimes said, everyone out of the building. We knew, we knew that. And on top of that, they have to do an annual training in service, and they have to do initial in-service when someone's hired on all of the aspects of the facility.
In this particular case?
Yes.
Is there, you need, I presume, a staging area or a gathering area on the property somewhere?
That's, yeah, that's established once the facility is under, developed, as it's being developed. That's part of what I do with my other partner in consulting business. We locate a place where people will go so they can be identified.
And with the, it sounds like a large number of trips are going to be coming in between the hundred and ninety-two people in daycare and the people in dialysis. These are going to be running through there briefly. How are they staged? There's nothing shown on the site plan, the architectural system, where they're going to stop, how they're going to get those people in. And if they stop on the side of, on either side of the building, that lane is dead. No one can get by them.
Parking experts have been working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Just to let you know, a lot of time, a lot of town nowadays provide the medical transportation by the towns if it's there. I do not know whether you guys are aware about it, but the town itself gives a complimentary service because for their seniors and so forth. I have seen that. Edison had done that sort of, you know. Thank you.
One last quick question. How many people can the radiology suite handle?
It's, radiology is MRI, every one hour the patient will be flipped, you know. So machine has to be do the productions, you know, and give, it's over two million dollar machinery, you know. So every one hour the patient will be keep changing.
Just one?
You could handle one at a time.
Three machines?
Oh, one machine.
So it's nine thousand square feet for one?
Um, all right. With, you know, I notice you're going to have a pharmacy here, and I think you mentioned that your son will do pain management?
Yes, sir.
And I know there's some other procedures here. With the, with the possible and probable legalization of cannabis, would that affect any of these types of facilities, not just yours, in terms of people who are, are ill, who need pain relief? I know that's a coming thing. I mean, it's here.
I'll tell you.
For medical, and maybe here for, for recreational. And this is probably an off-the-wall question, but would that impact?
You're putting me on the record, it's been recorded. I'll tell you, my son had joined me since June last year, since he finished the board, the board and fellowship. Today, until today, he has not ordered a single narcotics for any single patient. If any patient comes to his door and say, oh, I need a narcotics or so, my son say, I'm not right physician.
You mean an opiate, you mean an opiate, like Percocet, anything like that?
Absolutely.
And cannabis, because, you know, I know more and more people in the state are going to be using it, cannabis. Some of, the medical ones very, very legitimately, the legalized, I have no clue. But I didn't know if that was going to impact whether someone who's very ill, who's getting chemo or, or dialysis is going to be utilizing that here. Not that it makes any difference, but I don't know if it's going to add to this or?
I mean, not going to be providing, this is not going to be a drug clinic. So that's all right. I didn't, you know. I didn't know. I have no idea. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien has a question.
Yeah, Mr. O'Brien. A comment on that topic. The borough actually analyzed our ordinances a few months ago for anticipating that cannabis may or may not be legal in this. And it is our, our stand that any cannabis-related use within the borough would require a use variance. Number one, it's not on the list of approved uses. And number two, since it's not on the list that is prohibited.
I just threw it out because you never know. You know, you never know if it's going to help or hurt. One question, because there's a pharmacy, an in-house pharmacy, right? So now if I get medical marijuana and I'm, you know, is that pharmacy now going to sell me medical marijuana?
Pharmacy, pharmacy cannot dispense the medical, medical.
There's only six facilities around the state.
There is only six facilities.
Wow, six approved, but there's only six, right?
Okay, 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 okay.
They have to be licensed by the state.
Yeah.
And then number two, they have.
Can I just ask the person, how, do we know how long this particular witness is going to be? We're, we're getting close to the witching hour.
He says it'll be quick.
Okay.
Okay.
That was a great testimony.
Not that quick. Regarding this application, do you swear your testimony shall be the truth?
I do.
State your name, somebody last name, please.
Lee, with an initial D as in Daniel, Klein, K L E I N.
Thank you.
I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer, and that, that's a national certification that's also current. Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University. I've testified before probably a hundred boards throughout New Jersey. Close by would be Cranford. I was the traffic engineer for the Garwood Board. Let me think, I wrote one more down, but that's.
You've offered up enough.
Anybody?
Is the board, the board good?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Mr. Klein, you had the opportunity to analyze the flow around this building, the parking needs in this building, and the uses and the, that the applicant is proposing. Could you please give your, give the board your opinions on?
Mr. Goodman, if there's anything new posted, let us know. I'm up to eight, well, we did a ten, so the next would be a eleven unless we have.
Part of the plan said.
Part of the plan said, we're going to be referring to sheet three of four of the Gorelli Deck Associates Plan, the proposed improvement site plan. I believe it's in the package. This is part of the package.
Okay.
There was some talk about circulation for the site. If you look at the surface level, which is on the lower half of the drawing, as you come in or out, as you enter through the driveway of Galloping Hill Road, you'll be able to go straight underneath the building, access the back, and to access the parking garage, and to circulate around the building. No, I'm sorry. Two-way on the west, on the east side of the building. It'll be one-way on the...
West side.
On the west side, thank you, the parking.
That does differ from the architectural plans, which we have recently prepared.
Correct.
Okay.
And what I'm saying is the width of the, of the drive-off that goes underneath the building is wide enough for two-way traffic. It is a little bit narrower on the parkway side, and therefore we'd like to see that be one-way circulation. So when people come in, they can either go straight or make a left turn and go in front of the building, down along the side, that's the way the vans will come in. And they'll, there's that drop-off pickup area along the side of the building for the vans to pick up, drop off the adult daycare and the various patients. And they'll circulate around the building, and they'll be able to reach out either to the signal, make a left, or come back around and make the right turn, or go out and make the right turn. No, no, it's left turn, go around in front of the building and make the right turn out if that's the parkway.
So that plan is going to have to be changed too?
Well, which one is it? Is it two-way, one-way?
Two-way on the inside, one-way.
On the west side.
On the west side, northbound.
So you're revising the architectural plan?
Correct.
But he's going to revise them?
This one does not have directional arrows on it. This one does not have directional circulation arrows.
Yeah, but this one has a two-way...
That's a two-way driveway. That's a two-way driveway. They're both still two-way driveways.
Oh, so you can make a left, come in and off of there?
You can make a right turn in.
Yeah.
You can come across and the joke handle will come in.
Yeah.
You can come out here, make a left only.
Yeah, but why would you be able to make, get out there if you, I don't get it.
This is two-way.
Yeah, I understand that. But that's going to be, you just said that the bottom half, the parkway side is only going to be one-way going out that way.
Right.
So you can come back and circulate out all the way?
Correct, to make the right turn.
Got it, good.
So this will be one-way westbound?
Got it.
One-way northbound, and two-way on the other side?
Got it.
As the drawing was modified, I believe, we're going to be putting the medical trailer up against the building on the weekends. When we do that, we're going to have to cone off some of the parking spaces in the back so that people don't park back there and make a pinch point where emergency vehicles can't get through. So we'll have to manage that area a little bit on the weekends when they come in on Sat Friday night, and then we do on Sunday again. Do some parking space.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So they do Sunday morning, you're not going to get two days out of this?
Sorry, Sunday, oh, Sunday night, what did I say? Sunday morning, Sunday night. They'll come in Sat, Friday night, and they'll leave Sunday later. Any other questions on circulation? And I'll go back to the chart that Dr. Patel introduced. The parking numbers on it, labeled A-10. This table we put together to show the number of employees, the number of physicians, and the various parking spaces associated with them. Your ordinance provides for parking for one per each employee, plus four for each physician, or 175 square feet of parking space for each of those square footages for the building, whichever is greater. Now, in this situation, the square footage is the greater number. But in our specific situation, based on the uses and what we've heard previously from other experts, is that we feel that the number of parking spaces is based on employees and based on the physicians. With that multiplier of four per physician, gives us a total of 175 cars that we think will be on site. So again, each employee will have their own parking space, and the physicians will have their own parking space, plus there'll be four others associated with them. So we multiply, we put in the 12 plus eight plus eight, 28 parking spaces for the physicians. So we've got a total of 175 that we think will be the parking demand at a peak time. And based on the modifications to the site plan, we're going to end up with 225 parking spaces, which leaves us with an excess of 50 parking spaces. So those additional 50 parking spaces will be available for any additional visitors, any people that may visit any of the office buildings. And like we said before, the office buildings were parked at four per thousand, one for 250 square feet. So we've got those numbers in there based on the ordinance, and that, I assume, also includes visitor parking, because there was no separate number for visitor parking for office. So again, 175, we've got 225, 50 in excess. Based on the tandem parking spaces that you heard before, we're going to associate all the employees with those tandem parking spaces. We've got 101 pairs, 51 pairs, 102 parking spaces that are tandem behind the building and underneath the building. And those will be assigned to the employees, and they'll be in pairs based on the offices that they work in. So if somebody that works in the same office, I'll park in the front, they'll park behind me. If I need to get out and they're blocking in, I ask them to come in with my car. But for the most part, they come in once and they leave at the end of the day.
Question?
Sure.
Will that be delineated with signs?
Yeah, there's going to be signs in the garage.
Parking is only for this.
Correct. There'll be markings on the pavement or something.
Okay.
A little bit figured, there'll be signs to book up as well.
Questions?
Side of 147, 101 spots are tandem.
Of the 147 employees that we have, we're going to assign them to the 101 tandem spaces, and then the additional 46 will be able to mark and say, and adopters and their associated parking units.
Another question. What happens if these calculations of yours don't make, don't work in reality, because it happens, there's too many cars, too many, what's, what's the risk? What happens? Where are they, where are they going to go? There's no, there's no overflow for, for those folks. You're controlling the flow of how many people coming in and out with the vans and stuff. I mean, it seems like you could just control, as you see it go. I mean, if you have a problem, the state's going to jump all over you, so. I just, I don't know, you know, it's a lot of, it's very complex. I don't know if these numbers are, you know, going to be working. We're going to see, but I think it's important to think of the risk or how we handle it if it was not.
Right, but like I said before, your ordinance allows this calculation based on employees and physicians.
Okay.
If that's the low end based on the square footage, then you're supposed to use the higher number, and that's better.
Right, I mean, people are just not going to go. They're going to go someplace else, replace the car.
Correct, if they don't have the ability to. But again, the patients themselves are going to be brought in by the ambulance or they're going to be brought in.
I'm going to amplify your answer, but your question is, if it fails, it fails here. It's not going to impact the neighborhood?
Yeah.
It's not going to impact anybody but this building? If it turns out...
Well, make sure the patients are there.
If it fails, it could potentially create major traffic, James, on Galloping Hill Road, which is a very busy road to begin with. So I mean, people are, if people are having stuck getting in and out of that facility, parkway backs up, Galloping Hill backs up, so it has significant impact on that area of the borough, so don't diminish it.
Do you see that possibility that's going to impact the parkway or the Alpina Road?
Based on the information that was provided by the experts, especially Mr. Patel, who explains how on a rotating basis, an ambulance is bringing in one patient, an ambulance is taking one patient out. The adult daycare, they bring them in, maybe, let's say, five, six, eight of them at a time, they come in the vehicle. They're all staggered throughout the day. It's not like the government office where they're all going to come in at nine and leave at five. The medical, the majority of the uses within the building are going to be coming in throughout the day. Yeah, the employees will be coming in over an hour period, and they'll be leaving over an hour period. Throughout the day, the patients that come in for treatment will be coming in on a rotated basis. And there's, again, there's a signal to get people out of the site, and there's right turn out as well. So for times that I was there during the peak period, when I saw there were about 40 cars associated with what was there today, there was no, no issues as you would figure as it wasn't completely filled. But I think it's an existing building, it's operated in the past.
Yeah, but it's at 15%. That's what the doctor testified to. So you can't tell by the current situation at all what it's going to be like when it's at full capacity.
Well, based on the counts that I, that I got when I was there, the, this use is on the first floor, the 75 square feet, I counted about 40, 44, 44 cars parked there at the peak, and were associated with about 40 parking beds. So we're within 10%, but what we expect for that part of the building. So I'd say that Dr. Patel's numbers are right on for that.
So do you feel that the dialysis, the 40, is reasonable, that will allow 40 units? So a three-hour period of dialysis patients coming in, which is what was represented basically, between six and nine, the 40 dialysis patients would come in, and they're coming in one at a time, or one van at a time. So that's a van every four and a half minutes. Just for dialysis.
Correct. It's average in the medical way, and generally, it goes in the area, it's generally the two or three people come in the same van. It's not a one person. It's not even a cost effective, portable, a one person.
That's just what was said, that's all. The reason I gave it back that way, okay?
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask one more. Last one. Okay, you're going to spend all this money to make this really great thing that we really do need badly? You, and okay, it's complex, there's always different things. How do we regulate to make sure that you got, that it doesn't spill over on Galloping Hill Road? That's what I, that's what I need to do. I need to have some sort of mechanism to make sure that, you know, we don't, you don't, people aren't parking on Galloping Hill Road or something, or on the Parkway Bridge or something, something like that.
I think your architectural plan actually might be...
I just, yeah, I just need to see if there's going to be some government mechanism, state or, I'm sorry, I'll just...
There's a, there's a drop-off on the west side of the building. There's, I believe, a drop-off on the east side of the building, underneath the building, and there's also the drop-off in the Eldo Alcove towards the back of the building. So there's at least three places where vehicles are drop off.
Yeah, you need to drop people without the traffic being stopped, that's for sure, yeah.
Save it quick.
It must be late, it must be, I'm getting...
No, I...
Pull over and the cars can keep going.
Yeah, when I was there, I was able to circulate around the building while the van was parked.
All right, okay, done. I, I, I just, okay, is it, no more questions, rethink you?
Any other questions from the board? If not, professionals?
Thank you, Chair. We have not seen the drop-off areas depicted on any of the plans connected.
Yeah, we can do that. Show them on the...
On the side, east side, and then that would be...
They bring with them...
What does that mean?
This plan, there's, I think there's one on this side of the building, which is a spot that we answered, is the architectural plan.
This was the daycare.
Drop-off, daycare drop-off.
The child daycare.
This was the child daycare. So this is a drop-off area that'll be for dialysis, so it'll be for all the, all the units.
I'm referring to a shaded area at the bottom of the plan, so the western side of the building.
So, hey, Kevin? So referring to that plan, and just because it is narrow and the actual thing is narrow on that side, so when these ambulance or vehicles, right, are parked in that, no, just hold that for a minute. Were there parked in that, in that drop-off right there? Yeah, it's a larger vehicle, it's not a car, right?
It's a van.
It's a van, okay. But since it's narrow on that side, does the same size van, no, they're not going that way.
No, I'm saying, I, before the, I was able to pass by when...
No, I understand that. So I'm just saying, two vans side by side, can they fit on that side?
Side by side, it'll be head to toe.
No, but they're going to be parked here, but somebody else might be coming through, or maybe they're making a circular for a day, and they're coming back around here up next to... You said, you said...
It's wide enough for vehicles to pass, it's probably not wide enough...
For a van that's parked here, it's not wide enough for somebody to back at that parking space.
What is the actual width between the curb and the store and parking lot? What's that in feet?
Hey, again, to give you the answer.
Yes. The island.
The island.
The island.
I was saying, seventy, ten...
So it's...
Leftover.
Ten, ten feet, ten feet.
It's kind of tight for, for the van.
No.
Maybe.
There's 10 feet of travelway between the end of the parking stall and the drop-off area. There's 10 feet left.
The question was, from the curb next to the building to the drive to the parking stall, what is the actual width of the road?
Looks like it's 19 feet, Kevin.
Okay.
What I was getting at is that you have a van...
Excuse me, just a little bit. That's at that choke point here, isn't it?
Yeah, choke point, right. So let's, let's just have the scenario that we got parked cars from the entire side there by the parkway. They're parked, they're done, employees are in. The vans are coming off and they're dropping off, and you've got some difficult patients getting out of it. And for whatever reason, there's another van coming back around it, and he's got to pass it, and they...
Yes.
That's it.
One more thing to clear it out. Majority of the, all the dialysis patients would have a separate elevator to go on the second floor, and it is a large stretcher elevator size has been projected in the back. So just so you know, you know, once you mention that the chimney has to take the in, in here for the fresh, for the current endoscopy center. What we had on the drawings of that?
Yeah, that's it.
So the majority of the dialysis patients are going in through the basement?
Through the basement, they will come in the elevator.
Or the great, or the ground floor?
Coming ground floor, ground floor, I think, you know.
Okay, so they're, they're...
They're going straight up.
They're pulling in, one van is pulling into that spot, getting a gentleman, that's, a lady gentleman, that's on a stretcher, taking them out, getting them into the elevator, bringing them up, getting them off the stretcher? Stretcher coming?
No, no, what I mean to stretcher is a stretcher accessible elevator. It's not any patient on a stretcher.
Okay, because then he has to wait for that guy coming up and down, then we get back up a van.
It's just the stretcher accessible elevator, elevator size.
Hospital-sized elevator.
Hospital-sized.
What is the driver's responsibility to pull up? Do they have to escort these patients to their final destination, or do they drop them at the door?
They drop it off, they also call on intercom, so somebody will come from the upstairs staff, you know. So they'll, if the person is awake or show, they have to go back and forth, you know.
So a driver...
And that would not be happening when the person come for the treatment. That would happen only when the person is off the treatment, after, leaving the, leaving the space of the, after the treatment, you know.
So a driver will call for help from the upper floors as they drop off?[1649.83]
Yeah.
What is the average dwell time of a vehicle driving?
I'm sorry, what?
How long does a man drive?
Two minutes? Something like an hour to drop it off.
Even, even two minutes, you'd be using the elevator option?
I'm sorry, what do you say?
Two minutes using the elevator option or two minutes to drop them off?
Two minutes to drop it off. And the evidence, who drop it off from the van?
To wait for a staff member to come down?
Right.
To take, control that person that had on the van.
Two minutes to get five people who may or may not be ambulatory, walk that vehicle into a, into the...
And are you talking about the adult daycare?
I'm talking about anything, well, between dialysis, daycare, whatever.
daycare has a separate elevator, two of them, that's in the building currently existed and that's what they're gonna use it.
Talking, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just know too much about this. The worst case, if you bring them in a car, the worst they're gonna be is in a wheelchair. They're not gonna bring somebody into a stretcher. They can't even move. They're not gonna take them up to here. They're gonna go to hospital. They're gonna need an ambulance. And they're gonna be wheelchairs at worst. They'll probably just be sitting there. The elevator will come. It's gonna take more than two minutes, but they'll get done. Anybody's been to a hospital. They know that the lines are huge. It's just, you know, this is not that food.
Right, but we got more places to drop off.
This is very poor stuff. You know what I'm saying?
We were just trying to...
People wait.
Hey, one at a time.
It is a stretcher-sized elevator.
I know, I know, I know. If you had to get somebody out of there in a emergency, yeah, you need that, absolutely. We wouldn't bring somebody in like that, no.
To your point.
Yes, thank you.
Taking somebody out of a van in a wheelchair, waiting for an elevator, bringing them upstairs, waiting for somebody, waiting for somebody to come down, get them, bring them back up. This isn't fast food, as you said.
All right.
It may take longer than two minutes.
I agree.
While that's happening and another van's back there and another one's over here. Now, the job handle on the boulevard is getting jacked up. People are backing up towards the cemetery. There could be issues.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm sorry, I'm just concerned. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
Having no documentation, we still, we're looking for trailer movements. We're, we have a traffic engineer, but not knowing what the timing is of this. But we don't have, I think when Kevin was talking drop-off areas, yes, we can see a points of entry. But if you're coming, that's two-way traffic on the cemetery side.
Correct.
So that means the van is on the cemetery side, is opening up, dropping down a wheelchair, blocking the access in or out.
Vehicle will come in, circulate around the building, either they'll drop off here, they'll circulate around, go in the garage, go around this side or end up on this side so they're dropping off on the right. They're not gonna come in this way and drop off on the wrong side of the...
I have to go to a designated drop-off. They can't go to any. They have to go to a specific.
Correct.
Okay. So each drop-off is identified for a specific use.
Yes.
So if you've got four vans for that specific use, they have a way. If you have one van for one use, they're...
But they're scheduled. So you're not gonna have four dialysis patients all show up in four vans.
Well, you've got them scheduled inside for their appointment.
Correct.
Do you have control over that driver?
Yes, absolutely.
Picking up people at their various residences and their timing of arrival at this location? If they happen to run early, they make all the lights, the parkways clear, the sun rises, I mean...
I can't control it always, you know.
Well, the only thing is that you said that generally there's, there could be three, I don't know if there could be more than three patients in a van, right, for dialysis. There's forty beds or whatever, stations. Right, so that means at any given time, approximately ten, right, vans could be showing up at the same time. So it's, it's nine o'clock, you have forty beds or whatever to fill.
Mr. Kalkalas explained that there's ten staff up there. They can't hook up forty people at one time.
They're cutting over a three-hour period.
Everything, right, that's spread out. Everything is spread out over time.
Later.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Sure.
I noticed you didn't do a traffic report, which is fine. We should just sit the chart. Basically, based on parking?
Correct.
All right, okay. And the board is very concerned with turning movements and traffic circulation. And short of having the chart and you explaining it with all the professionals, is there any way that, and it's too late for me to think about it at this point, but I mean, is it too, is there any way that you can depict, since you obviously gotta come back with revised plans anyway? Is there any way that you can depict on a couple sketches, worst-case scenarios, everything that you just said with the professionals, put it on paper and depict it? Worst-case scenario, dialysis is backed up, MRI is backed up, the elevator is backed up. You know, worst-case scenario, and just put, like, you know, like you have, like, like you queue...
Fill in all the cars.
Like you queue one down, or something like that.
Fill all the parking spaces, show two vans, two vans.
And just prove, just prove to, prove or...
Support.
Support to the board that we're not gonna have backup on Galloping Hill Road.
Correct.
We're not gonna have backup and they're not gonna be blocking the box out on Galloping Hill Road, especially at the light, which I don't even have.
You're gonna see to fill up the queue here, to fill up the queue here.
Worst-case scenario.
To park a van here and to get them inside.
Yeah, worst-case scenario. And if you want, worst-case scenario, how far I can come around the back and, you know, order damn trailer or something like that. You know, whatever, but just, I mean, we get some...
The truck turning for the trailer is gonna be...
Well, no, that, Ed, you're not off the hook for that. You still gotta do the turning movement.
Well, I'm gonna have to do that.
Well, I know, because you like it, but I'm just saying, but somebody's gotta do it.
Right. And I'll do, like you said, different turns. I'll repeat it on this one.
Right, I mean, I think that would be much more clearer for us to grasp, you know? Because it's been a long time on its traffic circulation.
Right, I mean, you can see that there's the ability to stop at least two, maybe three vans here.
I know, but...
Here, van here, underneath of this.
But you got like nine different people making speculations. You could show us on, on, on air graphically and then...
So you wanna see vans filled up on different drop-off areas, cars parked in the parking spaces?
That sounds good.
Yeah, it'd be fantastic, right?
All right.
Thank you. I'm similar to the McDonald's. I mean, it graphed that, that project, that presentation was because we were worried about the traffic. We have a similar problem.
Okay, so we're now beyond the time that we said we were gonna cut this off, so...
Thank you. To that point, could I ask that, for Kevin's statement? And I know you kinda asked for this before, but you kinda need to have it done correctly. We need to have very clear, concise indications of the drawings, what they are. They're labeled, that they don't conflict with each other. And it's one set and they actually match. Beyond the advancement of getting the turning radiuses that we were asked for and the other information included on there. I would ask one thing from the standpoint of, it was stated that these documents have been brought through DCA and that before that movement, it had to be health-approved and that the mechanicals for these systems had to be approved by those agencies. Then I think this board needs to see where these mechanical systems are going to go.
Do you wanna look at all forty?
No, at all.
Do you wanna get maybe disapproval letters from...
No, I want a planning board set of documents that show graphically where these things will be. I don't need to see the construction documents, I think. And this board doesn't need to see forty sheets of, five papers. But we need to see where they're going to be. The places are reserved. We need to see where the generators are going to be. These are large items. These are not small items. When that generator got installed, the entire basement got ripped up. The entire back of house got ripped up. That all got degraded and redone for that one generator that was there.
Can someone be shown on a revised site plan?
Yes, I mean, we have site plans that might have... We have architectural plans that don't match the site plans. There's two HVAC units right there on that site plan. I agree. They're not shown. That may, you know, now you have an HVAC unit that's sitting right there while a van's coming to drop off. Things that you got, that are not evident on this drawing.
Could you show it on a topo plan? I mean, he has a topo plan.
Yes.
I know, well, obviously, not show because he's, he's making a comment on it, but can you show, huh?
And where there, if there's, I'm not saying that, you know, you have all the answers, but if there's a possibility that we're gonna have to add a generator, let's have a home for it.
Big foot to all the front parts.
Yes, I mean, you have the front there, you have the front parking and the concreted area. And I know that's a leaking issue and everything, which I guess it's been resolved with that building. That has always been a bane of that building's existence. But is there, with circulation, maybe with the circulation, the traffic circulation, there could be something else going in the front there, possibly. I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm not circulation, but... The things that you guys didn't have answers for, you have to have at least suggestions that X or Y is going to happen. And to the engineer's point, well, in the engineering world, I'm not satisfied with the removal of those curbs and this mysterious trailer, how it's gonna be there. I know it's very expensive, but it has to park there without blocking the garage.
Sure. Yeah, that's, we said they could do that.
They also, they said it, but we need proof of that.
I don't disagree with you.
They're gonna revise it.
Well, I don't know, is it clear, is it clear?
Well, why don't you, look, why don't you rattle off what we got so far?
Well, from what I heard, I think Christian wants a lighting plan.
Yes.
Uh, Christian wants a lighting plan. Lee Klein is going to...
Turning movement and...
We need revised, we need revised plans that, that match, that are consistent, that we can all look at without saying, I don't have that. So, so we need revised plans, lighting plan, turning movements, I think Lee Klein was gonna put together...
Turning movements for the trailer and queue analysis.
Worst-case scenario, yeah.
Circulation plan.
Yeah, turning.
Show them all the drop-offs.
Worst case. And that's, you know, 'cause the focus of this application is on parking. Everything else is more or less, everything complies or is not gonna be harmed in any way. So, but we need a comfort level, more of a comfort level as to how things maneuver and how they turn and make sure they don't block anything and things like that. So that's about what I have. Gary, I don't know if we're gonna need an extension of time, but it never hurts to have one, just in case. Maybe the end of, end of March?
You can have the MEP plans too.
Right, so, I mean, from my perspective...
Excuse me, you need the MEP plans for Mr....
Okay. At least generally. Placement of... By other board of places.
Oh, okay.
What's the next meeting?
It's March fourteenth.
Might wanna add just one thing that, um, especially with the proposed new building and that drop, that new drop-off area to create, at least a great new proposed area there to, just to show the clients with ADA, starting from dropping the people there. Since that's...
Like, there's three areas that, that...
Yeah.
And if you could get this to, to the board and mainly to the consultants, what, two weeks ahead? If you can get it within a couple of weeks, then we'll have some time to look at it.
Generally, the board requests items two weeks out, which would be two weeks from today, which is February twenty-eighth. They should go to the board on the twenty-eighth as well as the staff.
Right.
And we will, presumably, we get them on time.
Yeah.
Have our reports out a week before the meeting. I need it Monday, so it's fifth, which is why I want to report it and come out to the eighth.
So the next, is it thirty? Is it fourteenth? Today's the fourteenth. Next quarter is the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there'd be no further notice, seven thirty and now... Yeah, I mean, before we get to that, I just wanna make sure from the board's perspective, as far as I'm concerned, we need a motion to carry this case to the March fourteenth meeting. Do I have a motion to do so?
Can I ask one additional thing?
Yes.
Can you submit eleven, a set of eleven-by-seventeens as, along with the normal requested documents, just so that we can actually go through them? 'Cause the set is rather large.
Are you gonna be able to read everything?
No. You'll have, you'll have them in front of us.
I can read the eleven-by-seventeens.
No, you'll have them in front of us, okay.
Step one is full-size, please.
Yes, we still need the full-size, but just so that we don't bash up the counter.
Okay, so do we have a motion to carry the case to March fourteenth?
I made the motion.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Pantina. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
How many you need eleven-by-seventeen?
Excuse me, can we just finish our business up here? We have a second by Mr. Capari. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the meeting will be carried to March fourteenth. We'll put this case up first on the fourteenth, given that it's being carried.
Hopefully, how it is, seven thirty.
Right. Um, if, let me just make a comment to the public. I don't, let me just ask the question. Is there anyone from the public here who is looking to comment or ask questions on this particular application? Okay, I don't see anyone, so, but I'll still make the, the comment that this case is being carried to our March fourteenth meeting and no additional notice will be given. Can I request two things? Gary, you're gonna extend to the thirty-first of March?
Correct.
Okay, the other thing is, we have several members of our lot here tonight. Can we urge them to listen to the tape so they can be, they're gonna have to listen to the tape. There's no transcripts. So, and maybe take a look at the exhibits that we have, just so they can be eligible to participate.
Do they need to sign a certification?
Yeah, yeah, they'll need to sign a certification saying that they have listened to the tape. Hopefully, it's...
We made up, do you have a thought with that?
Something between, between Kathy and, you know, we have...
I think there's one.
Yeah.
They should leave that. Yeah, they said leave the exhibits.
Yeah, leave the exhibits and there's what, four, three or four members, four members?
There's already three.
So they're gonna have to listen.
Show if you ask for it.
So to get them eligible.
Kenny too.
Yeah. I mean...
To match the normal exhibit. Whatever's normally required, make the eleven-by-seventeens match that.
How many you need to block these numbers?
Ms. Jones should be here to ask for eighteen sets.
Is that over here?
Okay. So eighteen sets of eleven-by-seventeen, is that correct?
I think we're leaving these exhibits, correct?
Sure, yeah.
Any better mark, count the state. We want our members, we're not here to look at them.
So do you want eighteen eleven-by-seventeens? Because we will also need full-size for the staff and for the...
For ease, yes.
So I guess eighteen would be...
Yeah.
Okay. Move on to, uh...
Thank you.
The rest of the agenda.
Thanks, Senator.
Yes, hopefully, it'll be very quick. At this time, is there anyone from the board who has any comments? Too bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one can move on. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion made.
Okay. Do I have a second? A motion made by Mr. Gomoli, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, okay, the meeting is open to the public. If there is anyone out there who has any comments that they would like to make in general, you step forward, say your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I entertain a motion, uh, have a motion to adjourn.
I have to close the call portion of the meeting, sorry.
So made.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Capari. Second by Mr. Palala. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Should adjourn.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Capari. Your second, second by Mr. Pantina. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, the meeting is adjourned.
You.
Aye.